2022 meeting of the Ashland Planning Board. Just our normal note that due to ongoing COVID circumstances, we are broadcasting broadcasting this on Zoom for the meeting is being held on Zoom. And it is also being recorded by WACCA TV. So we have another number of public hearings tonight. I won't go through them all in the beginning here. Four or five public hearings. So some of those will be taking public comment. Others are just wrapping up or will be having limited commentary. I will let that be known when we get to the beginning of each of those public hearings. Peter, did we have anything that was continued? And so we should let people know ahead of time?
No, not this agenda. So we are every agenda item has has something going on, you know, has has material to talk about. Obviously, there is a withdrawal of the scenic road permit, which we can get to, which was number four on the agenda item. But there are no continuances for the material provided on the agenda.
Okay. All right, then I will call the meeting to order at seven twenty. I think we actually began at seven eighteen. And our first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing from three fifty-five West Union Street. Peter, do you want to give us a status on that?
Yeah. So the planning board, how are you doing tonight? So the planning board, I believe, two meetings ago reviewed all the material and had requested a site plan that was submitted by Mr. George Connors, who's here tonight after our last discussion. Remember, Marcelo drew up a sketch which was circulated on kind of summarizing the conversation on the meeting that we had. A site plan was submitted by Mr. Connors. And at that point, we did, Emma and I and staff, I would say, developed a decision which was circulated last week. Tricia, I just wanted to kind of jump right into it. I know through a conversation with you, we have a little bit of a miss. We just kind of want to cut into the fence and the surrounding, I believe. I believe on the site plan that was submitted on the seventeenth, you noted in that there would be a chain link fence. And I think we're here just to make sure that we're all on the same page regarding what the final details and material will will be. So.
Yeah, I don't think there was anything about chain like I wonder if it's easiest to bring up. There's there's some inconsistencies. And I had I had sent some corrections back to Peter. There's some inconsistencies between the the civil drawing, the letter that Mr. Connors provided dated February third and the renderings. So we need to make sure all those things are consistent so that we are voting on on one on one thing. And also that those things are reflected in the approval. So those they're fairly straightforward and easy to go through, I believe.
Yeah. So I'm just going to share my screen real quick.
Okay.
And so just to summarize, from our last meeting, this was a letter from Mr. George Connors dated February third. And at the last meeting, we all, the planning board discussed the materials. And there was going to be lattice at the back fence here, which obviously has is up against the existing deck. And there will be safety railings or safety wires. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's a type of a light railing. Yep.
Yep, around the the concrete blocks. And so on the submitted site plan, Tricia, as you alluded to, I am going to jump over to a different screen. I'm sorry. That's why I made sure I have it up. In the details, in the lower left hand corner, I'm just going to zoom into it. This is wire fence right in here. And 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 obviously, so safety railings in here. So I just asked Mr. Connors, do you want to, can we please clarify what will be surrounding the patio area?
Yeah, it'll be the safety railing. But if you go back to the picture, the rendering, you'll see that up against the building, there is the sort of a lattice type fencing because between or at the building underneath the deck is an open area that we want to blue cover. Yeah.
So so is this what were this versus wire fence? Is that a is that just a mistake? Or what was this? What was the idea behind this detail?
The idea is that there has to be some, there should be something adjacent to this patio is it is adjacent to the open space underneath the existing deck. So it can be a lattice, one of those plastic lattices you see, or this type of wire that's a coated wire, green coated like fencing that goes up against.
Okay, so there will not be a wired fence surrounding the perimeter of the perimeter of the patio.
That's correct.
If you can, if you can scroll over to the actual area, we know that this section is called section AA. Right? So if we can look at where section AA is pointing to, it's pointing from the front of the site and we're looking toward the back of the site. So in that side section, really, the the lattice, whatever that is, should only be shown on the left hand side of that section diagram. So the diagram's slightly incorrect at this point. Also, there's a note on this that says provide lattice screening along top of blocks. So that's really not there anymore. That should be what was the term, safety railing on top of the blocks. Right? So there's just a few corrections between. And I think these are the things that are reflected in the typed letter sent on February third. And the other thing in in that letter was concrete infill over the rebar on the blocks, forming a continuous and smooth surface. So that we want to make sure is incorporated in the approval, which I think.
Yes, I did.
You said you put that in. Okay. So was there any other? Do you want to bring up the approval?
The decision?
The decision. Yeah.
One minute. Hold on.
And if anyone on the planning board didn't understand these these kind of tweaks, it really, it wasn't a change in what we had discussed. It was simply a change in what was represented on the drawings, arrows going to the wrong place, things being drawn not quite right. Of course, we want it to be all consistent because we're referring to these documents in the decision.
Tricia, just to point out, this is the area where I put in the concrete in the my creature. I'm using fill.
Yeah. And I think I had suggested also we had said that in point one, under facts and findings, it said that the seating area was was concrete block. So this would be page three, under point one.
Yeah, excuse me. I'm just trying to let people into.
Okay.
Excuse me. Was that two?
Page three point one. Yep. So that you need to.
Yep.
Right. So in the, what is the second sentence of that? Site development should include an accessible entrance to the seating area surrounded by a low jersey burial style concrete block wall. So before we just had concrete block, which to me definitely makes you think of the normal eight inch by sixteen inch concrete block. And that isn't isn't actually the type of concrete block that we're using here. So I made that correction as well. Again, all things that we discussed, and I think we're clear on but things that were inconsistent with in the documents. So I guess my question is, in regards of how we proceed with this, I don't think, my first question is, I guess if anyone on the planning board has anything they would like to add into the corrections or just into the the discussion of the project.
I read your corrections, Tricia, and I agree, it's really just the mechanics of the the mechanics of the drawing and 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 the and the letter of the of the or the paragraphs to make to be consistent. But other than that, I I have no issues with anything else.
Okay, I had for the other members' knowledge, I had sent Marcelo, since he drew the original sketch, I had sent him the corrections I had made to make sure they were in line with what what his original sketch was and what he was thinking. Does anyone else have any any comments or corrections that they noted?
I just have a question about on page five, where we talk about special project conditions for the for the lighting. I don't recall, and it's just a little ambiguous what the proposed lighting is. Could we be reminded of that by the applicant, just to clarify how I I recall, we talked about how there's plenty of lights already there in the back behind the restaurant. So I did not get the sense there was any new proposed lighting, but this seems to kind of imply that maybe there's some lighting in the outdoor area itself. Can you just clarify that, George?
There is no proposed additional lighting.
Okay. So I kind of want to make that first item a little clearer then, because if there's no new lighting being added to the site other than what's already there, let's make that clear so that we don't end up with additional lights being added. This kind of.
Do you want, there should be no new additional lighting?
I.
That seems to be what George is saying, that there is no, there is no new lighting coming in.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think I think we could add something. No new lighting is proposed, but the lighting shall be shall be sufficient safe and and shall not overspill. Except that leaves that leaves an option for if if, you know, given the new construction, given whatever circumstances, if the lighting is not sufficient, then they'll need to put some lights out there.
Would it be helpful if we just i- if we say that the lighting should be at least the minimum required by the the but but for for safety by the building code? So that that they they don't go below that and the building commissioner would be would be the one inspecting that?
If that's in the code, that would make sense. My concern is I don't want to open up the door for additional lighting to be added that we did not consider that then impacts the neighbors. And the way it was, the way it seemed to read was it kind of made that very ambiguous what we're approving. So I don't recall that we're proving any new lighting above and beyond what's already in the parking lot. And that's kind of where I'm at.
That makes sense.
I don't, I don't want to.
The critical one, other than having light at the tables, is probably the accessible path, which what what the building code would probably define to make sure there's sufficient and lighting on that ramp per se that you have there. Looking at the distance, it looks like, I don't know if that length of that ramp is sufficient, but I'm not going there because it's probably part of the building code.
So are you done typing, Peter?
Yeah, I'm excuse me, I'm done.
Is everyone, is everyone okay with this change as Peter has constructed it?
I mean, do we want to say all current lighting of the proposed outdoor seating area shall continue to meet the state building code?
Existing lighting.
Existing. Thank you.
And I guess, Peter, you could delete the proposed lighting because when you say new, that covers it all. So it's not proposed. So just lose that.
That looks good.
And why do you have the now in quotes? Just. Okay. Emphasis. Okay. So anything, anything else in here?
Just from a contractor brain, the Jersey barrier style is really like what you see in the road dividing a lane. I think they're using the big square box, which would be called a concrete man.
A concrete what?
Deadman.
Deadman. Okay.
Yeah.
Love it.
And then you say infill with concrete and they'll probably use grout. So maybe with concrete or grout.
Okay.
So.
The Jersey barrier should be dead man?
Yeah. Yeah. Like you're going to sink somebody to the bottom of the ocean with it. And make them out of the waste concrete when you send it back to the plant.
Barrier style.
Do we need the barrier in there, Kevin?
Yeah, that that'll be fine.
That's okay. Okay. Okay, great.
We all learned something new today.
Slightly creepy, but.
All I've ever heard them call.
All right. So third time's a charm. Any any further comments?
Not at this time. No.
If if not, what I would propose, because the drawing will need to be updated, because this this approval refers to it. What I would propose is that we We. Vote on this tonight. Based on our, our discussion, our changes. That Peter will have it ready to be signed, but it does not get signed until first he sends it out again with all the changes. And until the new drawing is ready. And then it'll be, it'll be ready to be signed.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
Looks like that ramp that is kind of going up to like thirty inches. High difference, or is it less? Because typically, when you have a ramp above a certain height, you need. Railings on both sides. So does that come under the building inspector, or does that?
There actually isn't a ramp at all, but it's the parking lot that slopes.
The section doesn't look like that.
Yeah, if you, it's a little, it's a little slanted, the section.
Yeah, okay.
So it's actually the, the parking.
The natural grading of the site versus a ramp created. Okay.
That's right, and I believe. That in condition number two, under accessibility, it says they're pro- proposed outdoor seating should be in compliance with the standards and requirements of the. Of the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Actually, I would, if we're going to put that, I would, I would reference the M A A B, which is C M R five twenty-one, which is what rules in Massachusetts.
Okay.
And you can, you can have eighty-eight and M A A B.
Okay. Can you put that in, Peter? So show me the, being compliant to the standards and requirements of the M A A B. Which is.
M A B guidelines is, is five twenty-one C M R. Is the code that governs that in the state.
Five twenty-one C M R, M M A B.
Five two one.
Five two one, I have five two one C M R. M M A B.
Yep. Okay, Massachusetts, yeah.
Accessible, that's an accessible code.
Yeah, yeah. Architectural access.
Yeah. Okay. I can take care of that.
All right.
So is everyone comfortable with Peter making the changes, having the drawing changed, all materials being sent to us for final review? But, and, and Peter will have the. Have the signature, have the. Have the decision ready for signatures, should we vote it through?
Yep.
Okay. In that case, would someone like to make a motion?
I can make, do you want me to make a motion to?
Please.
This, motion to approve, I assume?
If, if that's the motion you're making, I will not.
Yeah, that's the motion I'll make. I will make a motion to. Approve the three fifty-five West Union Street site plan. Proposal as made and. As discussed today by the board.
And is there a second?
My second move.
And we'll do a roll call vote, starting with actually.
Laxmi Christian, I. Be Boinga Day.
And test Minsky, I.
Marcelo, I.
Tricia Kendall, eyes that passes five zero zero. So we will look for those materials. First of all, Peter will be looking for the updated, the corrected, I'll say. Drawing from Mr. Connors, and then. It should be after Peter's changes, it should be ready to, to go out for a final read. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on the agenda is five oh one Pond Street. So at this time, as we have. Noted in other meetings where we've talked about five oh one Pond Street. Member Anna Testmeninsky is an director butter, and so she has recused herself from this portion of the meeting. And I don't think it'll be too long, so don't go any long road trips or anything.
I'll be around, Peter, you'll just, you'll text me when it's time. So I'm going to leave and I'll rejoin when it's time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And.
Let me, let me press leave, hold on.
In her stead, we will be joined by a fifth member, Kevin McLean, who is our associate member of the planning board. So I believe. Um, we have some new materials on five oh one Pond Street. These were received late. But I gave Peter the okay to allow a presentation just of these new materials. So that we can stay abreast and be as current as possible on what's going on with that project. After that presentation, I will allow each of the planning board members, if they would like. To add any comments that they have, I, I will ask them to. Kind of keep it to the point. Because we'll keep this section of our meeting tonight. Short because the drawings weren't received in time, and the board has not had time to properly review them. So Peter, is there anything you would like to add to that?
Uh, no, I am all set. I'm going to make Matt Amorada from Icon Architects of Coles. To allow him to share his screen. Mr. Mark Holbach, are you planning to share your screen tonight?
I'm not planning to, Peter. I, I did want to give an intro to Matt's presentation, though.
Okay.
And maybe.
So can I introduce you to the planning board and to the audience?
Please.
So before you jump into the PowerPoint. Just remind all planning board members into the audience that this project five oh one Pond Street is represented by attorney Mark Colblack. Colblock, yeah, Colblock. He has represented our trust development, and Matt and Ben Stevens are here to represent trust development. And so with that said, Mark, please. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, my name is Mark Cablack. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. And I agree with you, this is a fairly short presentation. This is our third hearing on this project, and I would say that we are still at the conceptual level. The first hearing was one where. Planning board members and members of the public. Questioned whether this was the right use, or even the permissible use within the Pond Street. Overly district. Part of that discussion was whether we had the right mix of residential and commercial. The scale of the building, open space, and things of that nature. That resulted in a substantial redesign and presentation of that at the last hearing on March third. Tonight, we want to basically get a read from the board on some. Essential conceptual issues so that we can go forward at the next hearing, hopefully. With a much more detailed analysis on site conditions, traffic, stormwater, and things of that nature. In this discussion up to date, in other words, in the prior two hearings. There has been, I would say, a. Concern about the fit of this project and the nature of the special permit that's required. And I, while the special permit is discretionary. It is not totally subjective. It, it should be reviewed within the concept of what the zoning bylaw sets forth out. Sets forth for special permit criteria in section nine. It should occur within the criteria, the, the review criteria that the Pond Street. Overlay district provides. Most recently, the town spent a good amount of money with the CECL report. Visioning how they would like this corridor to look. I would say that the wording and the objectives of the CECL report should also be an important planning board consideration. And so the discretionary aspect of this, I would say. Is not what one thought would be built here when. He or she may, may have voted at town meeting for this overlay district. And it's certainly not what one would construct here if he or she owned this property. The, the more germane issue is, is this property, which has been lying dormant for decades. And basically, it was used. By the Faffords to store fill over time. Whether this property can have an infill development in, in, and a. Good gateway project for the town, taking an underutilized. Property and rendering it in a way that creates vitality for the area. Within that type of presentation. What we hope to achieve tonight is. Whether or not the board feels, in addition to all of the other metrics, the objective metrics of the Pond Street overlay district. Whether the board sees merit in. Achieving a higher density and a higher level of affordable units. That achieves not only the objective standards. And goals of the Pond Street overlay district, but also provides needed affordable housing in the town. And that is both a. General goal of the town in terms of housing affordability. But it also has specific provisions that enable the town. Under its housing production plan to continue its safe harbor. And. I know that you have before you. The screen on the presentation on the concept plans. But later on, I'll talk specifically about how the density bonus, the addition of additional forty. I should say affordable units here will allow the town to achieve. A subsidized housing index, even under the twenty twenty census. That will allow you to continue your safe harbor. So the presentation tonight is again twofold. One is to attempt to steer us in the right direction in terms of the general concept of the proposal. And as part of that, to, to render a decision tonight in some form as to whether the board sees added value. On maximizing the unit count for your subsidized housing index and.
I, I would say unless the board. Says otherwise, that we will focus on the first part of that agenda tonight. But at the last time we met, we were well aware. Of the other, what the other units mean, we're well with the, the board is well aware of that means for the town. And we noted that that isn't necessarily the only objective of Ashland Residence or of Pond Street. So unless. The board wants to hear this, that, that second part, again, I believe we've already heard it. We want to focus, I would like the board to focus on the new design elements, which is what we had asked for. Is anyone else from the board would like to? Comment on that?
No, I, I think maybe a point of clarification when we see what, what's going to be presented. We, it would be good to hear the numbers on, on what. I, I don't know what we're going to see today, tonight, but if we're going to see some options, just, just a quick understanding of what that means in terms of affordability and. And to me, that would be enough.
Okay, I agree. So let's have numbers, but not a lengthy explanation. We're quite. We understand that part of the project.
Okay, so with that intro, I'm going to hand it over to our architect to run you through these kind of conceptual renderings.
Thanks, Mark. Matt Marra with Icon Architecture, thank you for your attention tonight. As mentioned, we'll be very brief with this. Everyone knows where the site's already located. The new program that we looked at after the last discussion, we did look at reducing the density of the project. Taking the one bedroom count down by sixteen units, reducing the one bedroom plus count by five. And reducing the two bedroom count by one, and the three bedroom account is a new addition to the program. With four units, this brings us down to a hundred and two unit development, approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand gross square feet. Marcelo, this is kind of where we talk about the original scheme was twenty-five percent affordable. And the new reduced density scheme will only be ten percent affordable and will require us per zoning to provide at least twenty-four thousand square feet of public open space. Everyone remembers the last plan we presented. So what happens when we need to take a look at increasing the amount of open space for the project? Really, conceptually, it means that if we are to allocate it all at the front of the property, we need to provide a sixty-two foot minimum depth for the space. Which will affect our parking layout. So assuming that's the case, we would look at relocating the parking to the back side of the property. Taking advantage of the reduced size of the building and possibly cutting the wings back. This reduction allows us to cut down by four units per floor. But not a substantial, and this is just a quick, kind of site constraints, what would happen if we go down to this lower density? So what does that mean for site options? With the new program and the site constraints in mind, the dash red lines are illustrating the front. Site constraint of pushing at least some sort of drop off area, and I'm going to go into a little bit more of a concept that we have posed for this. Front drop off area, and the back red line is showing kind of where we propose to cut back this wings in this particular scheme. To allow us to get a full double tray of parking in the back. Option one is simply just that, cutting down the wings and allocating it for parking. Option two, looking at possibly moving the bar in, in board in, into the site. We feel that this is not as successful as it does create a little bit of a disconnect for the commercial space. And not as strong as a, of a street wall and presence along Pond Street for the commercial space. Although it does offer a little bit more of an open space area that could be utilized by the, the property. I will note, Tricia, I know you, you have commented on the sun and the shadows in the courtyard. I do have a shadow study that I could show you, but I, I will just note. That for the most part of the year, this act, this courtyard does actually receive a decent amount of sun. And at tie at the worst times in the winter, obviously, that's always going to be the case, but in the later evening and afternoon. Time slots when the sun does come around the wing, it actually does provides for some, a decent amount of natural light in the courtyard. Option three is looking at kind of making a new shape. Orienting it so we do get really great solar orientation to get the, the unit count we would need and to actually be able to have a usable. Courtyard of a, a minimum of sixty feet across, we would need to start to push the building back into the back of the site a bit. Pushing it closer to meeting house path, which then again will put a, a strain on how we can provide. More parking at the back of the site and not at the front of the site. Option four, looking at inverted view, like similar to option two, again, I think this is even creating. This particular option is creating a much more shadowed courtyard, which I do not think would be desirable. By anyone. You may be asking, okay, well, yeah, this is looking at. The open space at the front of the site, is there other options where we could put the open space to the side? Or in an alternate location? We felt like there's a couple of other constraints that we do need to take into account when we're talking about the site layout. We do need to maintain access for the easement. Along the Putz and Moore side of the site. We don't really want to push the building to plan right any further. That would push our building pretty close to the assisted living development. And we do really think we need to maintain a, a good circulation around the site for fire access, garbage, and just resident. Circulation. So those were some of the quick schemes that we talked about for the density. You can see what we're capable of doing and manipulating with the, the new. The new count. Everyone remembers what we talked about last time, trying to create a much more vibrant public park. I think we heard some comments about. Maybe it's not doing the job enough. Maybe we want to look at reducing the amount of parking in the front and making a much. Maybe we want to look at reducing the amount of parking in the front and making a much stronger retail and pedestrian connection back to the public realm. So we are, what we're proposing to do is to introduce the concept of a Wunorf. Funny name, I know, but it's a Dutch concept that is about creating a living street. There's many different aspects of it and that we're not committing to picking up every single aspect of the concept of a Wunorf, but some of them are about, you know, creating this more of a social street. Separated, not necessarily separating the traffic and pedestrians, but they are as part of the Wunorf, the, the living street. But it's very pedestrian friendly. You could have raised curbs, sorry, flush curbs, raised a, a different varying types of landscape and hard surface materials. Typically, these are lined with trees and it allows this to really be a, a street that is more of a social space. We think it's really going to enhance the connectivity of the site back to the public realm. This is looking at, this does contemplate, you know, the, the reduced density scheme, but depending on which way we go, we would look to incorporate this into whatever scheme we move forward with. But some of the things that we think could be really beneficial is we could create some gathered some more formal gathering spaces, as we mentioned before. The commercial space can spill out into along the Wunorf and really act as a, another pedestrian friendly connectivity back to the open space. We are, you know, envisioning that this might have some parallel parking, which would be associated with the commercial space or temporary spots for visitors to the residential building. So not a ton of traffic would be going through here and, and it could be more of the living street and a connection and amenity for the commercial space and the open space as well. The parking along it can be very easily separated with some minimal green strips and trees and allowing it to really share the space with everyone. And that's, those are some of the concepts in the reduction and the density that we're, we're currently looking at. So I, I will turn it over back to Ben and Matt if they want to see any, say any closing remarks.
We, we do have one more slide as it relates to the affordable housing numbers. I'll leave that up to the chair. If we want to talk about that, if not, we're trying to get a direction. We, we appreciate the board's time in this and we understand how important this site is. We think our, our last meeting, I think, told us sort of confirmed that we were in the right direction. The use by most of the board members, the, the mix between density and commercial. I think I got the message that it felt like we were approaching the right combination. We were, we were even approaching the right size of the building and the massing, but we were looking for that design element that sort of puts the project over the top. So we asked Matt to run through some ideas with us and we're hoping, we're hoping some of them trigger some opinions that we can work, we can sort of move forward with from the board and that's where we stand.
I'm, I'm happy to look at the last slide that shows, that shows affordable housing. That's obviously an important thing for Ashland and for the planning board. It's just, it's, it's making sure that that everyone in, understands the planning board is already aware of these numbers. We're already aware of how important those, you know, having additional affordable units are. So we're already aware of that decision, so we need to make that on our own about which direction we want to go from there.
And, and I, I can appreciate that. I just, there's public input, input. There's a lot of opinions and these were, I'll say, stay right now that only from my experience as a forty B developer and dealing with multiple towns, I'm, I'm the one who thought this represented an extreme value to Ashland. That's my opinion, period, end of story. Not, I don't, I don't intend to impart that opinion upon anybody, but I work with a lot of towns who work with me to try to get themselves over the ten percent threshold. And your, your neighboring town is working with me right now with the sole goal of getting over ten percent after the twenty twenty census. And this project gets you there. If, I, I understand it's just one piece in a big puzzle. And that's up for you as a board to determine if it's a big piece or a small piece. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So essentially this slide basically is how we see what happens next, either August or September. We couldn't quite tell when the safe harbor from the Arabella project expires and the new twenty twenty census numbers are incorporated. We feel with our project, you're going to be over ten percent, which means essentially you'll be able to negotiate any forty Bs for the next, for the next decade. And without that presumably, or some other project between now and next fall, if we go to a hundred and two units at ten percent, we believe you're going to be under the ten percent threshold. And that may be fully acceptable. But I can tell you from the development community, there are a lot of industrial redevelopment projects that are being eyed for apartments, because apartments is where the money is flowing and will flow for the next three to ten years. So I'd hate to think that in a year from now, a substantial proportion of industrial, commercial, underused retail will come back as a three or four hundred unit low income project. Unless that's what you want. And I know I'm not a resident in Ashland. I cannot speak for the goals and the directions. I just know what forty B usually means is a priority to some boards.
Just Tricia, can I step in here real quick and thank? Excuse me, Ben. Just to know, I just want to make sure that we have our math correct. Right now the town stands at five hundred and ninety-nine housing units. Affordable. If this would add a hundred and twenty units, which in total seven nineteen, to my numbers, seven nineteen divided into twenty twenty census housing unit numbers really gets me to nine point five. And so I just want to double check our math before we go any further. Obviously it says ten point five there. I just don't want to give false impressions to anybody that maybe watching the planning board meeting tonight. And so just want to make those as that before the discussion goes any further. Thank you.
Are there any, like I said, we, given, given that this, this information, new information for the planning board didn't arrive on time, we're going to only give it a limited, a limited time in our agenda tonight as we haven't had full time to review the material. But does anyone from the planning board have comments that they would like to make at this time?
I have only one question for Peter. Tricia, if I may, so, so given the numbers that you know, Peter, what, what is the likelihood, so that we all understand of other projects likely coming to, into play that, because we keep looking at these numbers as, okay, this is, this is the project that will get the numbers, whatever the number is. Is this really the only one? Or are we, are, are, are we that reliant on, 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 on one single project to achieve those goals?
You know what I think? No, because there's always other projects that may come up, right? I can't, you know, I don't have a crystal ball and tell you what we can and can't do. And obviously the town has funny, you know, has CPA funds and affordable housing trust funds. And if the town was, you know, interested in spending to develop, you know, affordable housing units and their buy deed restrictions, the town has the capability to do that. Marcelo. You know, I think just going on the, 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 the numbers, you know, you're going on the numbers, the town of Ashland is in safe harbor due to the development of indoor, the approval of a development, there is UGC, which was on the Memorial Drive, that's going to add a hundred and eighty units. Those hundred and eighty units are currently added to our S H I. The town of Ashland is in safe harbor until August third of two thousand and twenty-three. So we have over twelve months of still to remain in safe harbor. I do want to say that if we do not permit, not one additional housing unit, I mean affordable housing unit, and we stay at the number of five ninety-nine and safe harbor expires in August of twenty-three, the town of Ashland therefore will drop to seven point nine percent. And then obviously, then we're obviously therefore open to forty B development. But, but are we reliant on one project? No. Could there be other projects in the pipeline? Yes. And, and, but to tell you exactly what projects those would be in or are, I just can't tell you at this point.
Okay. Any other questions on the design concepts presented as far as a direction for the project?
I have a question for Matt. The four options that were shown, does it in any way either increase, keep the same or reduce the size of, or the height of the apartment?
Correct. Yes, the building still stands at four stories.
It still stays at four stories. Okay.
Does it affect the retail square footage in anywhere?
No. We're, we're maintaining the previously proposed square footage, which I believe was over six thousand square feet.
But in, in, in terms of the, of the options, and, and Tricia, I know you had, you had concerns about the, the massing of, of the buildings. I'll, I'll let you talk about that. I, I think from the options that, that I saw today, e- e- even if the number is what is shown or slightly different, that I, I see three, three important benefits of, of, of the progress of the, of the design. The first one is when I think we finally are getting to what I mentioned last time that I think is important. The concept of the Wunorf, that's exactly what, what, what I thought would, would be an approach to really make a meaningful space that is public and private at the same time, that melds, melds these two, these two realms and becomes really active. I, I thought that what, what was presented last time was still, just, it was a, a, like a series of tangent circulations. You have the big road, then you have the bike path, then you have sidewalk, then you have a new path, then you have a road and then you have a building. It's, it's just, you don't need that many circulations. I think what you need is, and, and it was feeling a little bit like a median with some boulders and, and, and some, I, I didn't feel it was useful. I think this concept is really what, 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 what is going to make a difference here because it's going to make the community not only adjacent to the building, but all the retail community to really operate. But I will take it one step further. I would say that still being a little timid. I think on the diagram that's shown, the, 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 the zone, I don't know, Matt, if you meant it literally, but you meant that, that, that red zone as being the area that's being developed. I would say that it's almost like, it's almost like, like, like being half pregnant, right? You, you, it, it's almost trying, but not there. What, what I was envisioning is that same concept and taking it all the way through. Basically from the street to the building is just one large, open, public space. And it doesn't have to be all paved, but, but you could have your main circulation the way you showed it. But off of that, you could have a series of plazas. I like what you guys said in the last, last time around, and maybe you could bring a foot truck, you can bring some type of vents. And that's where it wants to, to, to happen. And, and, and then really, it's not just to have like a, like a decorated median. I don't think that's useful. I know trees are, are, are great and we need to have trees, but we, what we need is a public space. And that is a gateway, that is a connection, and that is something that really is meaningful. So I think that's the really good direction. And lastly, on the back, the, the, the option one, I think still to me is the one that works the best. If the board feels that the reduction that's being proposed is the way to go, there's an additional benefit of the, the, the back wings receding from the neighbors on the back, which is, which is a plus. In that case, it would be good that the parking that's developed on the back is not just a sea of asphalt that is, that is a little more tactfully developed. But regardless of, of the dimension, I think having two wings meeting the neighbors on the back is a lot less intrusive than having a wall. And so that's kind of the front, the middle and the back. I think what I said today in option one, if we develop that front space fully, I think that, that is, that, that is meaningful to me.
I, I think it also, some of those site plans, because I know I talked about getting light into that courtyard, but the courtyard also became kind of a deep place that really was a private courtyard for the residents versus taking, making those shallower and putting that, some of that space back into the public realm where it can be used by tenants and the public for something bigger. It's kind of like living next to the corner spot, right? You kind of get to use it as your own backyard. And so I was even wondering about the zone you're showing in front, like, is it possible? You know, keep with, keep allowing for emergency vehicles to, you know, to close it off as you would, as you would close off a street for a street fair. You know, that it becomes really a public space now where events can be held. It's a destination, you know, those, whatever shops that are there, that probably may not be retail shops, but could take advantage of a crowd there on certain evenings or something like that. Like, how do we make, how do we make one plus one equals three in this project is what I'm always looking for. So any further comments? Deep, I saw you take your mute off.
Matt, great job on that concept of bringing the living street. I think that's what we were looking for and I think that really hit the nail on the head. And I think I, for some reason, am not disturbed by the density of this, because I think you will be able to achieve, especially with the Wunorf concept, you'll be able to achieve that with the density that you had prior already. I think it would be more impactful and successful. And I felt like the footprint that you had in contrast to what Marcelo said, for some reason, I felt like it was talking to all your neighbors. And it was not kind of being partial to one or the other, right? The option one, for example, had so much open space on one side of the south of the building. It felt like it was delineating the other neighbors and it was not speaking, at least from kind of the large bird's view. It was not speaking to all your neighbors in all four directions. But I think I personally felt like your last week's design options were much more interesting and adding that living street concept to that and refining it one more step would have hit it to the nail. I, I don't know, I'm not sure, I, the openness is starting to create or really benefiting or hitting the, the design from, I don't know, maybe it's just me, it just felt like, no, me, I would probably, even if I would go, I would choose the toward the fourth one, I think, because it started to speak again to the neighboring design or the building or the context for me versus I think option one or three.
I, I agree with you, Deep, about the one opening to the south. I, I think it kind of turns its back on the rest of the street. So I agree with you there. And I should say, I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to looking at a density that allows for more affordable housing. What, what I'm opposed to is going in that direction at the expense of everything else. So, so we need to look at all of the things that make a good building on this street and what the right solution is. And that there's more than one thing.
I agree with you, Tricia. I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to the density either per se. It, it, it is what counterbalances it, that matters.
Exactly.
To me, it feels like it activates that street in some way. There's so much openness already in that surrounding. It's going to activate that movement, the kind of that density. I think this particular site can afford that density. And I think the plans that Matt has presented, it really has done a good job. And I think it's kind of improvising and moving it to the next level. Right now it's on concept stage, obviously. So I think he's brought in a great concept of that Wunorf, our concept that I think would really make it an interesting kind of that entry, the gateway that we are talking about now by connecting it to the public realm and really taking it to the next level.
Deep, I'll just follow up with what you said and maybe a question for Matt. One, one benefit of what you were showing, Matt, is I, I think a, a balancing of the unit mix is also something that I personally view favorably, favorably. I, I don't know if, 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 if you would stay with the original footprint, what would be, what option do we have to see a, a, a better unit mix that is not so tilted towards one bedrooms?
Yeah, I, Matt and Ben, do you want to? Yeah, I, Matt and Ben, do you want to pick that up, that answer?
And Matt actually shared some concepts with us with sort of the, I call, I think you called the one, the one plus.
The junior one bedroom.
The junior one bedroom. Only because, you know, there's a, there's a square footage issue where we can only go, you know, we we only have so many square feet to put all these units. I can, I mean, Matt's creative, so I I certainly, we certainly can talk about it, but obviously, the minute we jump to two bedrooms, we jump another half of a parking space. I'd be interested to see how we could work on that front area. And if we can incorporate this concept and still manage a few parking spaces, then we can shift the unit mix a little bit. But I don't think it's, it it's, it really comes down to the the parking constraints, but we can certainly try. We can certainly try.
We still have a a long agenda, so is are there any last comments before we move on?
Is the new concept here going to be available somewhere that we can look at it offline after this? I I know, I just haven't seen any of this until just now.
Hey, yeah, Matt and Ben, you guys can send this stuff over to me as soon as possible. I'll put it up on the website and send them, they'll go to the board. Tricia, I do want to make note, Joe Mignani from the select board has his hand up.
Yes, I I see that, but correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but if I open up to public comments for one person, I need to open it up for all. And we have a long agenda, so I would rather comments be delivered to the planning board in another way. And when in future meetings, we will obviously open it back up for public comment. We're kind of squeezing this in here tonight. And and I appreciate the team bringing these new conceptual ideas to us.
Thank you. Matt and Ben, obviously, this needs a continuance tonight, so obviously, I think it's best off if we request to continue. If if we agree for a continuance, you guys could send that over to me as soon as possible.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need some time because we would probably like to develop, develop this out a little bit. So I I'm not sure when your, we probably wouldn't be ready for your next meeting, but it'd be the meeting after that.
No, I'm going to say April fourteenth, that's going to be our first meeting in April.
Okay.
And then obviously, I think we can kind of go from there. Obviously, with a full submittal, that's also going to have to go through site plan review and our third party engineer, which is also going to take a little bit of time as well. So I think at this point, it's best that we we are in agreement, and if I can get that stated in the email, I would greatly appreciate it to file with the town clerk to obviously make sure that the shot clock stops to April fourteenth.
Okay, then we'll do.
And obviously, Trish, can we get a motion in a?
Yep. Then I will make a motion to continue the public hearing for five oh one Pond Street to April fourteenth.
A second.
And roll call vote.
Actually, Christian, I.
Marcelo, hi.
Kevin, okay, now.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that's five zero zero. We will see you on fourteen.
Trish, hold on, I'm texting Anna.
Okay. Thanks very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Tricia. I texted Anna and hopefully she will appear.
Peter, let me ask you a technical question. We have all of these public hearings listed as seven fifteen because we never know how long they're going to last, obviously. Do we need to keep them in the same order?
Uh, we do. No, we can jump, we can jump, we can pull ahead if you want to skip over the the scenic road, which we can do that.
Is there? Well, that that's, that's not going to take long, I guess. That's just informational mostly, so.
Yeah, I assume most people here tonight are for the next two either building Americas, Hundred Cedar, excuse me, Chestnut and the Hundred.
Yeah, I guess it's okay. We'll take them in order. Probably best not to shift them around at this point. Did you hear from Anna? Is she?
She has not responded. I cannot. I usually text from my other phone, which I have not by my side. I texted it from my personal phone. Let me just hold on a sec. I am just going to jump off, but if she obviously jumps in, please continue.
Okay. I'm not sure how we would continue with this next item without Peter.
You did announce you want to take a break, maybe. It's almost thirty.
Yeah. If anyone needs to do that, you know, I mean, I assume they'll be back on quickly, but if you need to step away for a minute, go ahead.
Trish, I'm still waiting for a reply, so.
Marcelo and Lakshmi just stepped away for a minute, taking advantage of the break, so. So it's all right. So did you try to contact her from your normal phone?
Yeah, I I you texted her, I I texted her, and I'll try calling her.
Because I don't want to. We don't really have the time to to delay too too much longer. So when Marcelo comes back, this is something I think we can just keep going on.
I'm back.
All right, Peter's trying to call Anna. Peter, do you want to, just tell us what's going on with this one? I don't know if there's anything we even need to do with it.
Is this, do I go through the scenic road, or do you want to go through a hundred chestnut?
Let let's go through the scenic road and just get that off our plate. It should be just an explanation, correct?
Yeah, so the scenic road application came in, there's miscommunication with EverSource and their consulting firm regarding the scenic way. In two thousand and nineteen, the planning board issued a scenic road permit with a, which was going to, which expired in five years, which carried through until two thousand and believe twenty four. And so with that, the application that was presented to us, that was advertised, was really a mistake. And EverSource has an open current permit with us. And so therefore, just from a technicality standpoint, they put a letter together to withdraw this application to close out that.
Do we need to accept that withdrawal?
With, and that's all to accept the withdrawal without prejudice is probably the most, is the perfect thing to do.
Okay. Is that something we need to vote on, or is that just something you take care of with a memo?
I can just take care of that with a memo, but if a vote would be necessary, and then I obviously take care of that with a memo file with the town clerk to close that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this? This, this was within the time when I was on the board. I remember this coming up. And I believe the five year term was put on it because it it was kind of in litigation elsewhere, and we knew that would take a while. So it's not really something that's before the planning board again. It's still, it's still out there, right, Peter?
Correct, yeah.
Our decision, yeah, our decision was dependent upon Conservation Commission and other and other things because our jurisdiction over it was so small.
Yeah, so.
Anyone want to take a crack at that motion, or should I? I will make a motion to allow the withdrawal of the of the application for the for the public hearing without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Anna Tuskmaniski, hi.
Marcelo, hi.
And Tricia Kendall, I. All right. Moving on, continued public hearing with for one hundred Chestnut Street, special permit and site plan review. This continued from February tenth. Peter, can you fill us in about where we're at?
So from February tenth was last time we heard this, and tonight we have Mr. Roy McDowell, Roy McDowell the third, Tom McDowell with us. They, based on development, based on development, has appeared the president board two times now concerning the project at Hundred Chestnut Street, which would be the last phase of the building Americas. And so Mr. McDowell and his team, and I believe again with Matt from Icon Architects, submitted a revised plan in renderings that were updated, uploaded to the website and obviously circulated to the planning board. The the one, I will let Roy introduce the project, and Roy, do you want to talk about the changes that you made, or shall I?
No, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So it's all yours, Roy.
Well, thank you. Could you possibly turn the control over to Matt for the plans?
I think I still have.
I still have to go on that. You're all set.
Great. Well, listen, I want to thank the board for hearing us this evening. I will say, the last meeting we had, we listened very intently to the comments of the board and have made significant changes to the architecture, which we're hoping to the pleasure of the board. And we will also show you where we've dramatically increased the amount of commercial square footage as well. So this is, this is an opening photo here, you'll see a rendering of some of the changes, but if we can go to the next slide, Matt. So this is the proposed changes. You'll see, we have now changed the commercial slash retail space to ten thousand five hundred square feet, which I know that was something the board very much wanted to see. So we have done that. We've also added some five thousand square feet of outdoor public courtyard space, which you will see it's adjacent to the commercial, and we think will add a lot of vitality to that space, which you'll see in a in a rendering in a moment. We've reduced the project to one hundred seventy four units. You can see the breakdowns of ones, ones with dens and two bedrooms. The amenity space within the building now, we have eight thousand square feet of a mini and leasing space, including the many space, we have a gymnasium, media room, flex workspace, and various other components for the leasing office. We're now incorporating a community dog park adjacent to the project you'll see in a plan. We have some outdoor lounge area, some swimming pool area and grill areas. We're also incorporating electric car charge stations and bike storage. We have a breakdown, you'll see here of parking. We have three hundred and three surface parking spaces, forty five spaces under the building and a garage, and twelve exterior commercial parking spaces with a parking ratio on the on the residential of two spaces per unit. Can we go to the next one, Matt? So this one you've seen many times before. You can see the outline of the yellow, which is the parcel itself. And the star to the left, you'll see is the potential dog park space, which we've worked with Faford in acquiring that parcel. And we've had meetings with the neighbors where we would fence that area in, and it would be fairly significant size where it'd be for the benefit not only of our residents, but the residents of the entire development. So we think that's a really positive aspect. I'd like to now turn it over to Matt to discuss with you the various changes we've made to the architecture. If you could take it from here, Matt.
Thanks, Rick. Matt Rod again with, from Icon Architecture. Thanks again for letting me present to you guys tonight. I'll go through, skip through some of this really quick. We've seen this. We talked about the site constraints and where we're, where we can build on the site. This was the previous plan that we proposed to the board, which had the two mirrored C-shaped buildings, parking garage, a partial parking garage under each one, central landscape area, twenty, around two thousand square feet of commercial space on either corner of the building. And that we all know what the, what that was about. So the, what we looked at doing is hearing you guys speak so highly about making sure that this is really again, another interesting viable commercial space, mixed use development. We did look at, okay, what does that mean? What's something we can do of interest that could be a benefit to the the residents of this community and the community of of Ashland at large? Here, we did look at reorienting the buildings into two L shapes, consolidating the structured parking into one building, shifting the focus of the commercial space to the left side of the plan, splitting it between the two buildings with a central courtyard space that Roy mentioned is five thousand square feet and can be used as part of this commercial development. The, we really dug in and took a hard look at what we wanted to create here on the site and just some reference images that we were looking at when we started talking about this. I know, talked about interconnectivity of the commercial and outdoor with that open space between two commercial spaces, being an inclusive development that will be help in la- in 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 enrich and make more of a community space for the public here and really integrate this back into the neighborhood with some of the redesign of the architecture. Zooming in a little bit closer, just so you guys can get a sense of the scale of the space, we are looking at approximately equal sizes of five thousand square feet-ish of commercial in both buildings. We think that this is a great way to set the commercial space up on the site, allowing us to really stretch it out a little bit further along Pond Street and really maintaining the commercial in one corner, we felt like was much more viable than spreading it between the the really the whole side, other side of the site to really make sure that this is a well-used and populated and authentic space that's going to not just sit here and be on. populated and authentic space that's gonna not just sit here and be unused. In the time of COVID, obviously everyone has become much more concerned with health and well-being. So we felt it was important to provide this open space to the commercial area as an amenity. So they can have the ability to spill out and utilize it as they see fit. Here's a quick shot of the previous rendering that we showed to the board of the two she's C shapes. We, we've looked at really making sure we emphasize the three-story nature of the surrounding developments. Bringing the roof lines down, creating a true attic story. We've looked at pumping up the, I'll say the, the vision of the commercial space by trying to create this two-story feel to it to make it really seem like a interesting commercial space from the street since we are set back a little bit. Trying to create a little bit more of a visual interest that will grab people's attention. And, and really focus in on that commercial space and what's happening around there. Moving around the building, again, we did look at simplifying some of the massing and making sure that it was in tune with what's happening on the front side of the building. Coming around to the backside, again, consistent attic story. We are still proposing fiber spent lap siding all around the building. Looking into the retail, I think this is kind of a great shot because it really does, I think, really brings out how much retail frontage there is now with the tall windows. And really focusing in as you come into the site to express that retail use and commercial use. Coming down to the other side of the building, we're, we're looking at stepping down the massing without pitched roofs and trying to create more of a townhouse feel, since this is more adjacent to some of the existing townhouses in the American, in the Village of Americas. Again, I'm gonna kind of leave it here on this view. Looking into the courtyard and square of the commercial space that we're, we're looking to to develop here. I think this is something that can be well-used and will help enliven and enrich the community. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Roy for any final comments.
So I'm hoping the board realizes we've been paying attention to what they have to say relative to the amount of commercial space. Hopefully breaking down the architecture, bringing down the roof lines and keeping it more in line with what I'm hoping. The board sees us with the direction they wanted us to go. So we'd love to get some feedback from the board if we could.
All right, yes, at this time I'm happy to open it up first to the board for questions and comments. And then after that, we will be opening it up for public comment. But first we'll let the board get in there first. Anyone want to jump in?
All right, I'll jump in then. I, thank you for, for that presentation, Matt. I, I, I think that the, the, the changes you've made to the design are, I think are going in, in the right direction. There, there's, there's a couple of things that are a little confusing to me, but maybe, maybe I can ask you about that next. But the, the first thing that I, that I want to ask you, if, if, if if you put the, the enlarged plan of the courtyard, you had a slide with the, with an enlarged view of it. This one will work. What, yeah, this one. So the, 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 what, what it seems counterintuitive to me, I, 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 I think what what the, the, the purpose of, of, of the new courtyard that, that you created is, is good and definitely is going to create a, a place for, for, for the retail that differentiates it from, from, from the residential space proper. The first question is, is there a separation from that courtyard to the internal courtyard that, that is private? Is there gonna be a gate? Is it gonna be a fence? Is there gonna be something there for the public?
Yes, there would be probably a wrought iron or tubular black steel fence to keep the, the remaining space private.
But it's gonna be visible or like the, the, the landscape is gonna be visible from the outside or it's gonna be an opaque fence?
Oh, you'll see through it.
Okay, okay, that, that's good. So the, 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 the main question for me is i- i- is there any magic to the location of the curb cut, Matt?
No, we've actually been kind of pushing that around a bit.
Well, Matt, Matt, if I could speak to that, there is a little bit of magic to that because our engineers, our site development engineers have studied, given the pitch of the road. Ideally where that should be for the placement of the buildings. So I mean, could it move five or six feet? Yes, it could, but it can't move dramatically.
Okay, so, but, but, what I was gonna mention is that there's something counterintuitive to me of the location of the curb cut and the alignment with the courtyard. I think it would be a lot more natural coming from, 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 from the road to a public split space. If you would enter a place where instead of going where, where it is now that you almost, you, you're, you're going against a row of trees or a planter seems to be there. And then you have to do a sharp right or left. It seems to me that if you had it aligned with the courtyard and, and you would have some type of of, 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 of a roundabout place that, that, that can direct you to either place in a little more gentle way. It'll be a better connection also from the public. If I'm walking down that sidewalk and I, and I see that courtyard and I'm going there for whatever reason, where the commercial space offers. I have to walk through the cars to get there or through the, through the grass or go all the way around to come all the way back. It seems counterintuitive to me so that, but that's something that, that is related to the curb cut and is, is just, is just a comment. And, and lastly, the, the the, the architecture, the changes on the right-hand side of the development that goes to, to flat roofs. Or the appearance of, of flat roofs, doesn't seem to me like, like, um like an easy transition between those two types of, of buildings and the, the very different typologies and it, it seems like it goes evenly from one to the other because it's connected and it doesn't feel natural to me. And on the third, on, on the top floor of, of, of the main part. Looks like the eve is not hitting the window the same way that, that it does in the other parts. So there's there's some inconsistencies there and I would like, I would, I would like Matt to, to explain what, what the objective was with that change.
Thank you, Marcel for the comments. I, I think we were going back and forth a little bit on the flat roofs as well. The intent was we're trying to make this feel a little bit more village-like, a little bit varied in design and scale.
I'm sorry, could you move forward this slide so we can see the image while you're talking about it? Thank you.
Trying to vary the architecture along the front, along Pond Street. Because we heard, you know, we've heard that the building's big. So it, it was a way to express that maybe this is a collection of buildings. While I, I, you, the, they utilize similar characteristics and fenestration, they are pretty different. I agree. We are not opposed to continuing the similar roof along the side and maintaining, I think, what we've done with some of the other bits of architecture to help differentiate it from to make it at least feel like it's a collection of buildings.
Okay, I get it. I'll let the other members of the board talk, but I, I think if that's your objective, I think do you want to transition? Do you want a real gap or transition between the two types of buildings and one building is just hitting the other right on the roof? It, it doesn't look natural. But I, I, I let the other members comment.
Anyone else want to jump in?
I'm curious of how you managed to get that two parking spot ratio. Did the footprint shrink and were you able to get a better ratio? Because retail obviously went up.
If I could answer that, so if we go, if we look at the number of parking spaces we have. And you can look at it two different ways. You can say we have sufficient parking for the residential, but we don't have sufficient for the commercial. We can, we could argue, when we look at the statistics, we need approximately one point five, one point five five parking spaces per unit. Especially given how many single bedroom units we have. So normally what happens, especially with the commercial uses, the majority of the parking for residential is really at night when people come home. And, you know, they're there till morning and they go to work. So we sort of, you look at the number of parking spaces we have in the aggregate. One could say we have sufficient for the apartments, but we don't have sufficient for the commercial. Or you could say if we had one point seven for the residential, we'd have more than sufficient for the commercial. So I think we're trying to look at the number of parking spaces more in the aggregate.
That is one of the things we mentioned in our last meeting, that if we were gonna increase the commercial from four thousand square feet to ten thousand, that there would perhaps need require a, some relief on the parking requirements for that commercial space. You know, we want to show that we could still provide the two spaces per unit for the residential. But obviously, you know, we, we would, from our, from our math and what we've talked with our traffic engineers. That's probably about a hundred spaces in excess of what we'd actually need. And, you know, so we'd be paving a lot of area for parking spots that would never, never really be used. But, you know, that's what the requirements are. So we were trying to show that we can meet those requirements, but yes, it would require relief for the expanded commercial areas. With this new layout.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the planning board want to weigh in?
I, I, I have a very quick question actually for, for Peter or Emma. And then a separate one for the applicant. So Peter, I'm just kind of, I'm curious, I'm, I'm reviewing your memo from July, when we talked about the history of this project relative to the covenant. And I'm just trying to piece together the history here. It's certainly, this project right now, the way it's proposed appears far more consistent with the spirit of the covenant relative to commercial space. So I'm very pleased about that. And the question I had for Peter, I'm just trying to understand the history of the project prior to this particular applicant. Do you know, Peter, if after the zoning board decision that was not appealed? If Faford did in fact build the one hundred and sixty-four multifamily units that were supposed to begin after the ten thousand five hundred square feet of commercial?
To answer your question, I believe so he did. And to do that, to get into those hundred and sixty-four units. Mr. Faford built the temporary buildings that actually sit on that property today.
So he did the ten thousand five hundred, then the one sixty-four?
He did that one sixty, he did one sixty-four, went to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of approvals and to, I mean, or, you know, zoning board of appeals, the rendered a decision which was, goes back to two thousand and eight. Which states that he has to build half of the, half of the promised quote-unquote commercial space, which goes back to two thousand and six site plan approval decision. Mr. Faford builds temporary buildings that are, well, I don't want to say temporary, but the buildings that remain on site today. And then Mr. Faford continues on with the development of a hundred sixty-four unit block boxes. And then, and then that's where we stand today.
So I, I guess a different way to ask the question is, in your reading of the history, Peter. Did Faford build all the units that he was allowed to build? Did he kind of max out with the, what the zoning board of appeals allowed him to build? Did he have any, did he have anything left to build? Or did he sort of max it out and he was done?
He built, he maxed it out. He built it.
Okay.
He built every multifamily block box that he could underneath that covenant, which dates back, I believe, two thousand and one.
Okay, so, so in, in essence, we, we are being asked to kind of go above and beyond the covenant and sort of, okay, this is what you could build per covenant. Now we, we want to build more. Am I kind of reading this right?
The covenant never, the, the one thing about the covenant and, 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 and forgive me, it's, yeah, I haven't reviewed it in the last week or two, so. But I believe the covenant as it's drafted and was agreed upon by the town and Mr. Fat, and the Faford Company never outlines a true square footage number, right? Regarding the commercial space, but in this phase, which was also known as phase seven. And some point in time was also known as phase three. So it kind of gets shifted around in the development, with the, the, the felt valve phases of the project. This, the commercial square footage, again, dates back to two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. Which was a site plan review process that the Faford Company did go through twice. Those files I have reviewed and, and there are, and, and I have the original plans in the, in the, in town hall. And those point to the square footage. And that's what the, the two thousand eight ZBU decision points to.
And, you know, I certainly appreciate the very complex history here that was created by someone other than the applicant. It, it's just helpful for context to understand, you know, the flavor of this project and how to, how to frame it. I will say that I'm very pleased with the focus on the commercial development. I definitely believe that this area was, was zoned and the vision of the town. The interest of the town was that commercial development. So I'm certainly pleased that, by that element. I, I believe it's absolutely the right step. I, I do, I am curious to hear more about kind of the interconnection piece. The dog park location and how, how this area will inter, interact with the rest of the neighbors behind the project. Could you, could the applicant comment a little bit more about that? Sort of the location of the dog park and, and how you envision the residential kind of enjoyment of this space and how it intersects with this entire neighborhood?
Sure, I, I can do that if one would like. So you can see where the star is. There's a parcel over there that's probably quarter of an acre, give or take. And Todd and I have walked it a number of times looking at it. It parallels the cemetery next doors. There is a retention basin behind it. And there's some wetlands in the far backside. So we would probably need to go to Concom to get approval because we probably would be within possibly within a hundred feet, for sure not within fifty feet. And basically what we would do, we would leave the majority of the trees there. It might be some smaller trees that come down. We would do a black chain link fence around the perimeter of what would be the dog park. With a double gate, so you could walk through the first gate, close it, so your dog doesn't get out and then open the second gate. Have some sitting benches, have some toys and things there for the dogs to play with. We would have some bags and things there for dog cleanup and things such as that. And this would be available to the entire community, our neighbors to the rear and our residents as well. We've, we've had a meeting with the infrastructure committee discussing this.
And, you know, I noticed from some of the public comment we've received, there's so many kids in that neighborhood, right? Can you just comment a little bit about sort of the thinking, dog park versus a playground? I know, I, I, I know some of the kids ride their bikes into the cemetery. And I'm just trying to visualize how, how you're kind of, the space in the yellow, the dog park, how it's all gonna intersect with the energy of the neighborhood, which is very kid-friendly, very bike-friendly. And, and I don't necessarily know how dog-friendly that neighborhood is, so I'm just kind of curious, based on your input that you've received, is the dog park the preference of the neighbors? And did you consider a playground space instead?
Well, we, we have had numerous meetings with the infrastructure committee. And asked them if they had some needs that they might want us to help participate in. And there was discussion with them of gee, they'd like to add more lighting on the interior roads is one possibility. Some mentioned signage at the entrances, some stone walls to enhance their entrance. Others have mentioned possibly a playground. So there's been various points of view of what they would like as enhancements. And so after meeting with them, we, we proposed to them that if they would work with us and get a propose, the, our proposal approved by the town. We would gift to the neighborhood association for uses, they can choose whatever they want. Hundred fifty thousand dollars we would give them. So not only would we build the dog park at our expense for their use and enjoyment as well as ours. But also contribute money to the improvement to their neighborhood.
And Roy may add, there was a lot of discussion about people who walk their dogs in the neighborhood. And Roy may add, there was a lot of discussion about people who walk their dogs in the neighborhood if we don't pick up after them. It's become an issue in the neighborhood. So one of the reasons we were thinking of the dog park was it's a place for people to bring their dogs. We'd have uh dog uh uh bags available and and a receptacle, which we would uh from our maintenance of our apartment building as well, clean that out. So you know, you take the sidewalk down, we knew Isabella to Chestnut to right into the the dog park. And it's also not an area where your dogs are barking right next to people's homes, making potentially noise. Um, so it was one of the issues we were trying to address was, you know, they also were worried about people from the apartment building walking their dogs to their neighborhood. So that was another way to address that as well.
Is there a way? Sorry, go ahead.
No, but that's okay.
Is there a way to do this without taking down trees?
Well, we wouldn't take down any major trees because they add a nice shade factor. So the intent would be to leave the vast majority of the trees. There might be some rotten trees, dead trees, very small trees or trees that frankly too close to each other to grow properly. But other than that, we would leave the trees.
We would keep a pretty natural dog park for the chain-linked fence, the double entry. Um, but there's no problem with trees being within in that context because, you know, dogs can run around trees.
I I was gonna say, as a dog owner, usually trees don't really bother her. She's kind of a fan. Um, they tend to be useful for a dog. So you know, my preference, I I guess where I'm coming at this, this is a a wild wood district with a lot of green space. Um, I I want to protect that as much as possible. Um, there's a lot of leeway here. And I appreciate the flexibility. I I'm I'm not a massive fan of taking down trees to create public space here. I'd rather retain them. So it would be helpful to see a little bit more kind of the plan for the dog park area to understand it a little bit better beyond kind of the the star is helpful as far as location, but I would love to see more granular detail of what we're, what you're proposing as part of your project.
What we can do to our next meeting is we can go out and physically stake what we believe to be the perimeter of the dog park, take detailed pictures of that and send them in for the next meeting.
I think that would be helpful and 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 sort of what I'm, where I'm coming from is I I feel like you've made massive progress as far as the intention of the town and the people on the commercial element. And now I'm trying to visualize what this was truly meant to be. This was meant to be that village feel, right? This is a, this is a neighborhood. So I I want to figure out how to get those neighbors comfortable in that space that you're occupying in the front. It it's meant to be part of the neighborhood. So I like where you're going. I I just want to see more of that integration.
Thank you. I will, I will say that when we show you where the dog park is going to be, you'll drive by it, not even notice it being there.
I don't know if others on the board, you know, what your thoughts are, but um I definitely think it's a step in the right direction and it's the integration piece that I'm I'm now want to perfect a little bit.
And anyway, may I just mention, you mentioned something about the three hundred and twenty-eight units. Um, the covenant, I I just pulled it up while while you were talking, it actually talks about five hundred and twenty-eight units for the whole kind of district in this area. And three hundred and twenty were for the townhomes that were are are built. And it said up to potentially two hundred units at this location. And that's, so there is a total of potentially five hundred and twenty units, which we're not, we're not proposing the full two hundred at this point.
Those were, those were all fully built, though. That's the issue.
The three hundred and twenty-eight were.
And the, and and then the additional one sixty-four um in lieu of the two hundred. So technically, I think there's only sixty, sixty left in theory. This is, this is.
No, the three twenty-eight includes the one sixty-four.
The three twenty-eight is all that's been built.
I may have misunderstood, Peter. I thought you had indicated that he kind of maxed it out. Faford built everything he could build.
Of quadplexes of the multifamily developments. So the three, the three, excuse me again, what was the number?
I believe it's three twenty-eight.
Three twenty-eight in the covenant. I would have to look at it, but.
The covenant allows it to five twenty-eight.
That is correct.
So you're saying there's at two hundred left?
Yes.
Okay.
Within phase seven, quote-unquote, which was this last piece, it was two hundred, it was always earmarked. Correct me if my term is not correct. Two hundred units for this, within this phase.
So, so that's helpful. I I heard Peter earlier, I may have misunderstood, but I I thought you had indicated that he kind of maxed out what he could build. Um, so it sounds like, in fact, there's two hundred left, if you will, per covenant.
Correct. He maxed, what I was trying to say, excuse me for the the uh the misinterpretation of the multifamily developed, the multifamily units, which are, which in which has always been known as quadplexes. Mr. Faford built every quadplex that he could build without moving into what is known as phase seven, which was dated back to two thousand and five was was in in within the covenant, what that was marked for um two hundred units.
Got it. So essentially, there are two hundred, there is space left per covenant for two hundred units. It has not been maxed out. There is still space for growth.
And what is in, what is not in the covenant is the total commercial. The commercial, the total commercial number is tied back to the site plan approval that Faford completed in two thousand and five and then again in two thousand and six. However, the covenant does mention commercial space, but it but it does not have a total.
Understood. And and I, you know, I I definitely think that the covenant is is not um it's not the most clear document in light of the phases that Faford undertook and how he chose how he chose to implement those phases. Um, and so the implementation piece and the the intersection of different phases makes the interpretation of this document very difficult. Um, which is why I I, like I said, I I absolutely think that this project is moving absolutely into the spirit of this covenant. Um, and um.
We very much appreciate that. Thank you.
There's a lot of history to unpack in this.
Yeah. Are there, are there any other comments? Sorry, Anna, were you finished?
No, I'm good. Keep going. Yep.
Any, Lakshmi, were you jumping in?
Yeah, yeah, I just had one question, one for Peter and one for the team here. So the, I know the new massing is hundred and seventy-four units. So what's the makeup of the hundred and seventy-four? How many one bedrooms? How many two bedrooms? And how much is going to be affordable?
All right, it's ten percent affordable.
Okay.
Uh, there we go. So we have ninety-two one bedrooms, twenty-one one plus uh and sixty-one two bedrooms.
Okay. Uh, so then Peter, based on this new information, does this come, uh, based on all we heard in the prior project, will this help us get to the ten point five that we need with this included? Or was it already included in your formula?
No, so this project is proposing ten percent affordable housing. And so therefore, this project is going to be a net zero to the increase of affordable housing units. It will be net equal. And so for the hundred, for the units that it's creating, it's also creating affordable housing units to offset its impact within our SHI. And I do want to just make note that um obviously inclusionary zoning is a topic that has been talked about in this board and it's obviously been a big part of the housing protection plan. However, um, within the Wildwood use district, um, there is a requirement to build ten percent affordable housing to make a net even um impact on the SHI number on the existing homes um that have been built have included ten percent affordable housing units.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other um questions from the board before I open up to public comment? Okay, so we will be opening it up to public comment. Um, you'll need to raise your hand. Um, and um, when Peter um says it's your turn to speak, you'll need to give your name and address, correct, Peter?
That is correct.
And um, we will be doing right now, just because I know we have quite a few people on the call and I assume a lot of them are here for this project. I am going to put it um at two minutes a speaker, one time to the mic, at least until everyone who wants to speak has a chance. And then obviously, if we have time um that that people can get in in line again in order to hear um the most diversity of voices to get the many, as many people as we can um to have a chance to speak. So I will turn that process um over to Peter, if you don't mind.
Uh, I do not. So we have three folks with their hands up. Uh, and the first person will be Mr. Mark DeSoni. Mr. Mark DeSoni, can you please introduce yourself and state your address?
Hey, thank you. Good evening. Back to Sony forty-nine Hawthorne Road. And this project is going to do a lot of things, but I'm just probably go through. And I'm going to title through the Ashland code pages. Uh, the first one would be about the access to streets. The yeah, the entrance and exits. How close are the parking areas to that and to to the roundabouts? That'd be one question. And for about the site development, the requirements submissions. All the criteria come forth on this. That'd be another question. Then the special permanent grant authority shall be the plan board, yes, and within the Wildwood mixed-use district application. Residence use, which is additional to requirements. I want to know what those requirements are. And an advocate shall submit the plan, well, at least five copies, which is probably what they did. An application site plan, which is what this is. And I like to know that from the ground floor to the to the rooftop, the height. And the materials and numbers of bedrooms. One or two bedrooms and um the methods, what's going to be the um use of the water and sewage? How much of a usage is that's going to take? That's 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 that one.
Why don't we, why don't we move through some of those questions, Mark, before you go forward or your or your two minutes will be up? I think some of the questions have just been answered about the one bedroom and two bedroom. They just showed that on their slide. But I don't think they talked about the height of the building. So that would be a a new question. And I think some of the other um questions will also be answered more when we get to civil drawings. Would that be right, Peter?
Yeah, that would be correct. Obviously, civil sets still need to be submitted. Um, the revised civil sets need to be submitted. And so a lot of Mark's questions would be answered within that process.
If I may, I'd be happy to answer the question about the height. Um, we have talked about this uh in the past uh meetings. The building will be approximately forty-five feet tall, and that's really going to vary depending on the final grading around the site.
I will say the turning radiuses in the parking areas and the dry aisles have all been approved by the fire department. And as far as so, as far as so use, if you look at DEP numbers, what actually uses are uh typically in Ashland and other communities, it's typically fifty-five gallons per day per bedroom. So typically, a one-bedroom unit will be fifty-five gallons a day. Two-bedroom could be as much as a hundred, hundred and ten gallons a day.
Okay, can I go one quickly and then come back and maybe later on for my last one?
Do you have, do you have one more question you want to ask now, Mark?
Yes, it's about the parking lot. It's got to be quick and then later on, if I get a second chance, I'll do my last one.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. The parking lot area is, it's it's an ADD compliant and does it have handicap parking spaces?
It is fully handicap compliant, ADA compliant, and it does have handicap parking spaces per code.
Okay, I'll come back later for my last one if I get a second chance.
Thanks, Mark. Um, and just a note before we go on to our second speaker, um, like I said, I know there's a lot of people on the call and I would strongly um encourage people if they um to to voice their opinions here, that this is kind of a chance to weigh in and we would love to hear from you.
Uh, the second person with their hand up, thank you, Trisha, is Leba. Leba, can you please unmute yourself and introduce uh your yourself with your address?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Leba Babu and I'm a resident of Seventy-One America Boulevard. So the community adjacent to the Hundred Chestnut Street. Do I proceed?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, so I I I have two things to say. The first one is to address Anna's question about the dog park. Uh, so um, we had sent out a letter that had uh that had sampled hundred residents of this uh unit and asked them and expressed dissent over this project due to multiple reasons. The first being that there is a high number of children here. So if you see that uh sample size, it to to every, there were like fifty-three adults and there were like forty-seven children showing that it's a neighborhood with a vast density of children. And what's warranted there more than a dog park is probably a playground. And this idea of the dog park uh it did not come from the residents. So uh it's just something that is easier to put up and less liability. So I want the board to know that because we're talking about integration. Um, and the other part uh was to put to rest this rumor that the community is talking with the developer regarding this and have consented in any way. No, the majority of the people in the community are still not okay with such a big uh multi-rise building right in our backyard. Uh, there are many reasons to it and I will not go to each, but the main, the biggest problem here is that we uh if if any of the planning board members have been in this area, you would know that the uniqueness of this neighborhood is that there are no fences. We share our backyards. The, we know, like, the, we share, like, everything over here is very open and shared. And what happens when a multi-rise building comes into play is that the uh because it is part of the association and it's part of the covenant and it's part of Faford's land, they get access to our roads, which were once right uh almost private in the sense that it was only the people in the community who would walk around or, so we had that sense of safety as to like we knew our neighbors, we still know them and we know like that when our kid is playing outside, we just have to look through the window and we can be sure that there's, there's not an influx of two hundred people that we don't know who can be having access to our backyards. So that is the primary and the, I think, the most biggest concern raised by most of uh the residents here that this, this does not seem fit to this location. It's a great building. They are great developers. They are great architects. Um, let's give them all of that, but uh, so it's not the right fit for this neighborhood. So my question to the planning board today is, does it matter? Like, do our voices matter? Does it matter that you have received in paper uh from multiple people that hey, we're not okay with this? And does it matter that we are, you know, we are residents of Ashland, such a small town? And all of us here are like young professionals. These are probably starter homes for all of us and uh, you know, when a condo like this, a two-bedroom home sells for six hundred thousand, it's been, it's not because of the uh leaky windows or the creaky floors or the flush that you can hear from the ground floor, but it's because for the community, like, people know people here and they want to come to where they belong. And that's why there is people who buy into this community. Um, even now, like, despite knowing the flaws and the pros and the cons. So my question to the planning board, it doesn't matter, like, does it matter that we're trying to tell you that hey, this is not like, maybe not fit for us, like, uh, what can we do about this? Like, we can, they can tell you in many different ways that we are like, this makes, this makes uh me feel unsafe that in my backyard, there's going to be something big and I have no control over it. And I'm not saying that I should have control over it, but does, does my voice matter? Does the voices of all those people who signed that petition and more who did not get an opportunity because of the lack of time and resources, doesn't matter? So that's my question.
I I think just to a- address that really quickly, I think that's why we um allow, of course, uh, public comments that we want to hear. As I said, we want to hear different voices um regarding any kind of development in town. But that said, we also have to balance things with the the zoning and 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 the bylaws and and the rights of property owners as well. So um, so there's a variety of factors, many, many factors that the planning board is mandated to to look at. So yes, it matters, um, but it's not the only thing that we have to consider as well.
Okay, okay. So is there anything that we can do to, you know, help uh our voices be heard like better? Like, is there, um, is there a committee whom, um, you know, we can suggest that maybe this doesn't work, this does, or maybe not? Like, is there anything else that we can do other than send letters to the planning board?
Um, well, I I don't, I guess I don't have any suggestions in that way. Someone, someone else might. But coming to these meetings, participating, sending letters, talking to your neighbors, all of that, all of that has an impact. Um, but like I said, it's just, it's complicated. There's, it's not just one thing um that we that we have to consider. There are other, there are other things. That we that we have to consider. There are other, there are other things as well.
So is it the covenant that is supreme in this regard? Like, is it that?
There's the, there's the bylaws, there's the zoning laws, there's the Wildwood overlay district. All of those are in Ashland bylaws that were voted on by Ashland residents. And so to us, it's kind of the law that we have to follow as the planning board. So there are the light rights of landowners that that are looking at the bylaws as well. So it's not just, you know, it's, it's not just a matter of what what neighbors want. But also a matter of the laws as well, so.
And I mean, if I could add, the covenant is absolutely important. And it's a real document that I think this board is absolutely reviewing. And you know, I think we've been discussing it with the applicant. I I've raised it at every single meeting. I'm still reading it. It's the kind of thing you need to read about twenty times. To, you know, to kind of be able to say a sentence about it that makes sense. But I I'm continuing to read it and it absolutely applies and it makes this specific project really different from. From any other project I've seen on the planning board because typically we do not deal with covenants. So I I'm not gonna walk away from that covenant. I think we have to honor it to the best of our ability. And I can tell you that. It's a complicated issue, but this project is unique because of the covenant. And the covenant does allow us some leeway more so than other projects. That's my opinion.
So and the covenant also says that they can build two hundred more units. Like, do you think that something that was like, you know, something like that is still like applicable considering like the number of people here? Like that are already there?
The covenant, the covenant is complex because the covenant could be interpreted to mean. That you need to build twenty thousand square feet of commercial space, right? So the covenant could be interpreted in multitude of ways and we could argue all night about what it means. But but ultimately, your voices are being heard. And I think at every single meeting we've had, we've discussed the covenant and we've seen the. The project move towards the spirit of it, in my opinion. It doesn't mean we're done. We're still having these meetings and I think the public participation is really important.
And on that note, I think we do need to move forward with the next speaker so that we can ever give everyone more fair time, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next person with their hand up would be Bill Nova.
Hello, Bill Novakowski, thirty nine Lakeview Terrace. This is for the planning board and I'm asking that you request. Much more detailed renderings of what these buildings are going to look like. Only because I drive by. Two of the properties constructed by this firm, Buckley and Legacy Farms on a regular basis. And those buildings feature vent, sidewall venting, which to put it mildly is unsightly. And Legacy Farms features a forest of white PVC pipes emanating from the roof of every building. And I doubt that those were on the original renderings. So I would really like to know what these buildings are going to look like when they're finished. Okay, I mean, this is, we're in the honeymoon stage right now. And, you know, I laud the efforts of Baystone. They look nice in the, in tonight's renderings. I'd like to see what they're going to look like when they're done.
May I address the comment?
Yeah, could I comment on that briefly?
Sure, just to keep it brief, Matt, do you want to jump in?
Yes.
Matt, before you do that. It's Legacy Farms, Legacy Farms, we're the master developer, meaning we did all the subdivision, the roads, the infrastructure. We did not build any of the buildings up there. So I understand what you're saying. Frankly, I hate looking at white pipes going through roofs, roofs, and I totally agree with that. There are plenty of other ways to deal with it. And as far as vents on the building, we always color code the vents on the sides of the buildings. By code, you have to have those and we make sure they match the siding of the color of the building so they're not an eyesore. From there, Matt, I'll let you take it.
You said exactly what I was gonna say, right? And we will be screening, we are screening the rooftops, so we won't, you won't see any penetrations or mechanical equipment.
But Bill, your, your point is well taken. Sometimes the, well, usually the little, the little necessary ugly things don't show up on the, on the pretty picture, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So lower your hand and continue on. Excuse me, if I do not have the right pronunciation of your name, but Mr. Canouch Pata, please step forward and unmute yourself.
The last name is Patel, P I.
Huge, huge Patel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Huge, but can you unmute yourself? I think he's not there.
All right. How about now? Is this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And yes, you guys pronounced it correct. This is yours from thirty four Queen Isabel Way, so from the community. So few things are actually going on here. And we are actually emphasizing on the original covenant. I would like to request the planning board committee to review it before giving any permits. Because we are also trying to read and interpret ourselves as well. And there was so much of history over there. Like original plan for suggesting twenty thousand or square feet commercial and the units. I mean, I'm not saying that it has to be exactly or something like that, but if we are giving up on something, what's coming on the return? So I would love to see the, it's as interpreted from the town side, we would love to understand as well. We are also trying to read ourselves to see what are the limitations and the permissions. I second to Leba that, yes, we are not feeling safe about it. Our original concerns are not addressed yet about safety and security. About new residents coming into those apartment complexes. They're gonna access our areas where we do not have any permits for those, when we do not need it. But yes, we are definitely feeling unsafe about it, or at least concerned about it. And third thing, there was a survey conducted within the community. I don't know if it matters to town planning board, but it would be great to see and consider those results. Or I would like or to request to planning board if you can conduct a survey for at least this neighborhood area. To see what actually people are willing to do. Reason that sometimes this is a new plan proposed today, probably not everybody's ready. And we would need more time as well to understand it and put the comments. So I would like to request you to at least either take a poll or survey or continue the public hearing for the next meeting. That's it.
Yes, I can, I can assure you that we're not going to be voting on this project tonight. It's not at that stage yet. It's still really in the beginning stages of a project. And I am not sure if the planning board. Puts out community surveys in in that way. That is something I'll have to discuss with Peter, maybe how that has been handled in another situation or something. Maybe the, maybe the developer would take to get a survey to every household to talk about. Playground versus dog park or those type of things. Maybe that can be part of a future discussion.
Sure. And one more thing was like, I'm not sure if Mr. McDo will have considered reducing the total number of units. Somewhere closer to one twenty or so. I believe we are concerned with those many number of units. This is just my personal opinion. Like if it will be reduced closer to one twenty or so, probably people, the residents, might be okay with that. Might be, but this is definitely looks very like very dense and so many units within this neighborhood. I'm not sure if they have considered reducing that number of units for the new tenants.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person up to speak is. Nira Patel.
Yes, hi, this is Nira Patel. I'm from three zero six America Boulevard. So I want to ask a question regarding the ten thousand five hundred square foot in the plan. Which had a five thousand square foot of. Just a minute. Courtyard adjacent to commercial, so is the five thousand part of the ten thousand five hundred? Or is it addition to the ten thousand five hundred?
Nothing to do with it. Separate.
Yeah. Ten thousand, ten thousand built square footage enclosed for commercial space and an additional five thousand square feet of open space associated with the commercial.
Okay, and the, the discussion that was going regarding the covenant, which does not have a commercial. Square foot mansion. I just want to point out that there is a twenty one thousand square foot of commercial mansion in the covenant. And based on the covenant, it was decided that half was, half of that twenty one thousand was to be built for. Far Far to move ahead with the one sixty four additional units that he should be building. So that's, that's the reason why the ten thousand five hundred square foot was built, which was half of the fifty percent of the. What was planned as per the phasing rules or as per the rules for that particular phase. Another thing I want to mention is. That covenant also talks about the number of units that needs to be built. So it does have five twenty eight or five thirty eight units. But when you look at them by phases, it's only adds up to four seventy eight. So it, the covenant also talks about that as well. So there is no hard and fast two hundred unit mansion. It just, the two hundred is there, but there is also the four seventy eight unit mansion as well, which comes to one twenty or one fifty units. So I just want to point out that to the planning board as well as everyone. Who has not got a chance to read the covenant.
Through the chair, if I could comment on that.
Please.
The covenant does not require twenty one thousand square feet. I think you may be looking at a ZBA decision. And the covenant, in fact, does allow up to two hundred units of multifamily housing specifically in this location.
Yeah, as Roy mentioned, there are a lot of documents. There's a previous site plan review, which, where that's where the original twenty one thousand square feet comes from. And a various number of units on the site. And then there is the covenant, there is a ZBA decision, there is the zoning. So there's a lot of documents to look at and it is hard to get them all straight, which one says what. But the covenant does say the two hundred units and there is no exact square footage per commercial in the covenant.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to read out the page nine of twenty of the covenant. The mixed use site development plan approved by the planning board, one, two thousand seven. Depicted a total of approximately twenty one thousand square feet of commercial space. Fifty percent of this equals to ten thousand five hundred square feet, a sum of certain further the board finds constructed. So so I just want to point out that there is a twenty one thousand mansion.
That's not the covenant.
The covenant's a page as long.
That, that, I think you're reading part of the ZBA.
It's five of eight of the covenant. But I'm just talking about the full document which is uploaded on the Ashland website. It's five of eight of the covenant page. Page number of five of eight. If you want to see.
You said five of eight.
Yes, and it's on the bottom of the, the last paragraph. And on the page number four of eight, which talks about different phases to be built. And when you read that out, the, or add some above, some them up. It adds up to four seventy eight. So the second to the last paragraph of four of eight also talks about. While the covenant mentions a maximum of five twenty eight residential units. The schedule presented above only adds up to four seventy eight units. The fact that the final number of units was not.
I have no idea what you're referring to. I've never.
I'm just reading the covenant. I think you're looking at the wrong.
I'm reading the covenant as.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, hold, hold, hold on. I'm gonna say that we, we understand now that, that, that this, there's some questions about this. There's maybe some confusion in understanding or we know that there's a million documents out there. And I am going to put town planner Peter Matchick on it. That will be confirming not, not tonight, but going through into making sure all these things are, are clear. And and easily, as easily understood as possible by all of us. And that is no easy task. So I am, I apologize in advance, Peter.
No problem. So I'm gonna, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say at this time, because. We have a list of people now that still want to speak. And so if you want to speak, I would ask you to get in line now so that we can judge our time properly. Because you don't want to be hanging out with us at eleven thirty either. And this is not going to be voted on tonight. Like I said, we have, we have more meetings ahead of us. But if you'd like to speak up tonight, please get in line immediately. Otherwise, we will, we will say the end. Speaker is, is Ujwala at this point. Okay. Thank you.
Do I mean to time people, Tricia, two minutes or no?
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to keep track a little bit better now that our time's getting longer or our lines getting longer. Thank you.
So Maxwell, please unmute yourself and I am going to start the timer as soon as you speak, start speaking.
Maxwell Miranda, six John Hancock. My first question is like, since we have been discussing about the covenant. I would request not just one person, but if, if more than one can. Review the covenant and help us understand as to how many units can be built, what should be the commercial. Space in terms of square footage. And that's mentioned in the covenant and help us help the resident understand about it. That would be great. Not just one person, but multiple lies checking through it because interpretation can be different. So I would request multiple people to help us understand what is actually written in the covenant. Second question, as Leba and multiple people have mentioned about the security. Due to the influx of people getting into the community space, that's the second one. How would you handle that? And third question is. I I understand like this is just the beginning. We are just, we have just started discussing about the design and all. But my question would be like, just in case, like after the completion of the project. If there are any issues or concerns that that might arise and after the apartment is built. How are these issues usually handled later on? For example, the traffic, if you see that in like an increase in traffic. Any security concerns or issues around car parking or any, any security issues? How would the town handle after the apartment is built? Thank you.
Peter, is that to you?
That's to me about security. I think obviously security is handled by a police department. And I, I think that's what I would kind of lean on. You know, how this development relates to the existing development built by Mr. Howard Crawford. Obviously, I would assume, assume obviously they'd be hopefully seamless between each other. And their rights to pass on the same roads that. That obviously are within the rights and as a property owners would have. But from a security standpoint, the, the, the actual police department would have to be involved to.
Great, thanks, Peter.
If I just may address, there seems to be a lot of concern about the security and safety of, of renters. And I, I think, you know, there, there's a incorrect or misconception about, you know, who are the renters that are going to be living. In an apartment building like this in Ashland and, and there, a lot of these are renters by choice. They're, they're, you know, it's, it's really. Normal people. It's not someone you should be concerned about your safety. It's not, no. People from, I don't know, it's not a prison. It's, it's, it's an apartment building. And I don't think the security and safety concerns are really justified, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I, I agree. This is something I was going to address later, but I think we need to be very careful of. Judging a resident. One Ashland resident judging another Ashland resident, it's by the way they find a home. Whether it's a single family freestanding home, whether it's a condo type home, whether it's a rental home. We have to acknowledge that we're all Ashland residents. I have been a single family homeowner for about ten years and for. And for about 10 years before that, I was a renter of apartments and I'm the same person. So I think we do have to be a little bit, a little bit careful about that. And as we go forward. So I was going to bring it up later, but Todd's comment made me jump on in on it now. So.
Could I, could I just add that, you know, I absolutely agree, we can't discriminate against renters. However, I'm, I'm also hearing in the comments, not so much an angst about, you know, these people are bad, we're gonna move in, but a sense of how do we integrate? How do we feel like one community? How do we not lose our sense of comfort in knowing our neighbors? How do we not, how do we retain that, that comfortable feel of belonging together where we know everybody? So I don't necessarily think that's discrimination. I think that is a, a very important feeling in a community and in a neighborhood. So I don't want to lose that. I want to honor the importance of allowing renters and we would never discriminate against people like I, I'm a renter. I've been a renter. I mean, I own now, but I'm just like Trisha, I used to be a renter. We would not discriminate against renters, but we, we can't lose sight of what's really under the surface of these comments.
I could comment, Tricia and Anna, I think both of you had some great comments. And I think there are ways that we as owners of the property could help make this happen. We can have community nights where we invite the neighbors down. You know, we, we can sponsor get togethers, you know, cookouts, barbecues, meet and greets and things like that. So, you know, people get to know each other and they're not the evil people next door. But in fact, they're our neighbors. So I think we'd be very happy to participate in making that kind of thing happen.
Okay. Thank you. Let's, let's continue on with our list.
So the next speaker tonight will be Larry. Larry, you're next up with two minutes.
Okay. Hey, thanks. My name is Larry Chancey. I'm a unit owner at 405 America Boulevard. And I just wanted to say that I think Baystone's done a great job in what they're proposing to make us feel, you know, integrated as a community. And to what your comments were just recently about, you know, the strangers, I think with warm weather and people getting out and taking walks, I think there'll be some integration and socialization that way. I also wanted to say that a lot of people that I know are in favor of, you know, Baystone and also the, the dog park. I know a lot of dog owners and, you know, there's also a potential of having a lot, you know, X amount of people. Renters now having dogs as well and having a place where they can go and just take them off leash and do their business would take a lot of pressure off of letting the dogs run through our community and, you know, relieving themselves in the lawns where we don't have an irrigation system. Also, Baystone's offer of giving us $150,000. They did not, we did discuss having a playground, but then they decided, hey, we'll give you the dog park. Use that money in your own discretion to put in, you know, speed bumps for the kids to make it safer for the kids. So cars will have to drive slow. Also, you guys can decide down the road, where do you want to put the, the playground? You know, because there were considerations about insurance, maintaining the playground, things like that. So the playground is definitely on the table, but we just have to decide as a community where we want to put it. Plus, that location for the dog park, it fits putting it in there. And it, you know, realistically, you, you wouldn't want to put a playground there. So it's just a natural fit for the dog park. So why not, why not put it in? That's really all I had to say.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Next up is Josh. Josh, please unmute yourself and your two minutes starts now.
Good evening. I'll keep it short and sweet. Traffic impact on Union Street and Chestnut Street. And this impact on the schools, adding more people to the school system. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
I'll just address that we are, we have filed a traffic report. We will be updating it if, if the planning board gives us a direction to move forward in the manner we're presenting tonight. We can update our traffic report and send that information into the town with the newest data.
Okay, thank you, Todd. I am going to continue on if I may. And next up is, excuse me already. Is it? Deepak?
Yeah, it's Deepak Bhagya.
Deepak, how you doing? I'm sorry about that, but please, your two minutes starts right now.
Yeah, so I'm Deepak Bhagya. I am at 83 America Boulevard. And I had just one question. Under what conditions will, can this go for a town vote? Considering the history of the property and this has happened twice, in this case, will this go for a national town vote? Thanks.
Thank you. I can tell you at this point, no, the, the town vote would have been within a zoning bylaw. And there's currently no proposes, proposals to change the zoning bylaw. So therefore, no town meeting vote would be necessary at this point. Tricia or Roy, do you have any follow up?
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, not that. I mean, I don't know any reason why it would go to, why it would go to town meeting.
But it went, it went twice in the past, right? So was it all zoning changes?
I believe those were based on different zoning changes or particular changes in uses of the property. We have, this is an application that is just falling under an overlay district in our zoning bylaws. So they are working within the current zoning bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be C. Shapley.
Shapley. Hi, this is Carol Shapley. I'm at 29th Road. Hello. I think the building is beautiful, but few expressed what I was thinking. But I wanted a little more detail. When we do a project like this, that's going to add so many residents to the town, there's a lot of impact. You know, we talked about traffic, we talked about the roads themselves, you know, maintenance and things like that. Water, sewer, you know, what's the impact on that? And, and I'm just wondering, and the schools, of course, how many children are going to be added to the school system? Is there any kind of studies done or when you do planning, this is my first meeting. When you do the planning, do you kind of look at the overall picture? And how do you anticipate what might be needed for the town for infrastructure and schools, et cetera?
So just to take, thank you so much, Carol, for the, for the question. It's a great question to ask. And the planning board does take into consideration all those elements regarding infrastructure. Obviously, an applicant works with the town, number one, to make sure there's capacity, to make sure there's water capacity, to make sure there's sewer capacity. And in some instances, applicant will actually pay, will help, you know, pay for upgrades that will allow their project to come online. This development, I believe, had, you know, going back into the early 2000s, may considerable contributions to the town actions, water and sewer. And as this project kind of moves forward, that will still be under consideration for all intensive purposes. With that said, the town does look at all the elements, traffic, schools, impacts on the schools, impact on traffic, impacts on the infrastructure, to make sure that no project is creating a net negative in that we're all kind of, and all projects are, are fit into the fabric of the town.
Thank you.
Any of the planning board members or Tricia want to touch, touching on that or?
No, I'm good at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next up tonight is Shanee Ha. Pradeep.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Neeraj. I'm also a resident at America Boulevard. I'm on 228 America Boulevard. I had the same question. This is a previous person addressed. Two questions actually, both to the planning board and Baystone. If there was a consideration made about the influx of students to the school district. I do have my children attending Warren School. And right now, I would say in the morning, it's only a four minute drive from home to school. But the morning commute is about like at least 15 minutes in and out from the school. So I know there is quite a amount of traffic in the morning. If we have that building coming up, that's going to be another, I would say, an average of 50 to 60 cars during that period. Are we doing any kind of studies to consider what would be the impact of traffic to the school, to the area and how that impact would be mitigated?
Peter, if I could touch on that.
Please do.
But we, we have done a very extensive traffic study and the town also hired a peer review to review our traffic study. And the two have pretty much aligned themselves with their thinking. As Todd mentioned, if the planning board would like us to given a new concept, because the original traffic study we did was for 200 units. And now we're down to 174. So it will need an adjustment in that regard. As far as students, if you look at the number of one bedrooms, predominantly one bedrooms in this building, I, I feel we're going to have very few students because a lot of these buildings, especially with one bedrooms, don't have children typically. And some of the two bedrooms will, but typically the renters by choice that we find in these types of buildings do not have a lot of children.
Okay, thank you, Roy. I'm going to continue on here. Then next one up is J. A. JAI. Thank you.
Hi, Jagannath Ramachandran, 437 America Boulevard. I want to first start by acknowledging the fact that the applicant is making a lot of changes to their original plans based on the feedback that they're receiving in this forum. So I appreciate that. My question is regarding the parking spots and traffic. I know a few of us have already brought that up in this meeting. So the original traffic study was done for, I believe, much smaller retail square footage. So is the plan to redo the study with, which includes a larger retail square footage that has, that is being proposed now? And with the increase in retail square footage, I'm assuming that the, the parking spot ratio is much lower than the two or whatever is needed. How is that being addressed? And the last question is, is the dog park certainty? Or is that something that is dependent or on, on an approval process?
Well, it definitely is dependent on approval process because without the approval when I'm building a dog park. So that's for sure. We will be updating the traffic study to show the reduced number of apartments and the increased number of square footage of commercial space.
If the planning board wants us to continue in this direction. And just regarding your, your question with the number of parking spaces, we are showing two parking spaces per unit for the residential, though there are, we aren't quite meeting the commercial requirement. And really the synergies of being a mixed use development, the biggest demand for commercial parking is from your nine to five timeframes. And your biggest demand for residential parking is really overnight. So, you know, what our actual demand for parking is, we believe it's closer to 1.5 spaces per unit. And providing two, even on the highest demand period, we're going to have approximately 80 to 100 open spaces that, that aren't going to be used at this point. Sure, it's nice to have extra parking, but we feel that there's more than adequate parking for, for this project.
So is it fair to say that the applicant is asking the planning board to probably make an exception, taking into consideration the practical aspects of when people commute to work and when the retail space will be used?
Relative to the commercial.
Yes, when, when we, when we increased our commercial, we kind of reshaped our plan to increase our commercial component from 4,000 to 10,500 square feet. And we did mention, I think at the last meeting, that in increasing that, we would potentially request from the planning board some relief on the commercial parking.
That'll be something, that'll be something we address down the road. It, it's always looked at, so it's not being decided here tonight. Mark, just, just as a heads up, I'm going to take these last two speakers. And because we still have another public hearing after this one, I'm not going to be allowing a second time to the mic, okay? But thank you. I'm sure we will hear from you again.
Excuse me, I muted myself. Ujwala, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, this is Ujwala Povnakar. I'm owner of 229 America Boulevard. I've been a resident, I was a resident there since 2005 and I've seen how Faford has changed the dynamic. Like whatever he has been promised has been changing a couple of years. So how do we make sure that whatever Baystone promises gets implemented in the sense that whatever he's promising the residents? And the other thing was, when it was approved, the covenant was 20 years ago, when the dynamic of the schools, the number of school children enrolled was totally different than now. So would that be taken into consideration, the present? And the other thing was, the last thing was, the dog park. The location of the dog park, I feel, is near the wetlands or, you know, the open space. How, like, is there anyone who is going to take care as to what kind of land is that? If it is wet or conservation? Because I have seen that it was wetland in 2005 and slowly it got covered up and buildings come up over it. And now it's reduced to a very small corner where the dog park is. So, and not necessarily that all the dog owners are going to use the dog park. They will definitely would like to take the dogs for a walk. And the community is a, you know, you can't restrict every, anybody to come into the community to walk their dogs.
Through the chair, if I could answer some of those?
Um, just, just keep it brief because we're wrapping this up tonight.
Thank you. As far as the buildings go, whatever the planning board approves and we pull a building permit for, we cannot get a certificate of occupancy unless we have distinctly followed those plans. So it's very important we follow whatever the planning board approves, number one. Number two, as far as any agreements financially or otherwise we have with the community, that would be a written contract with you that we'll be signing, that will be held accountable to. As far as the funding goes, our agreement with the committee was, once we got approvals from the town and the appeal periods have elapsed, we would pay that out immediately.
Thank you, Roy.
I believe the project would also be going through conservation commission if it's any, near any wetlands. Who would be looking at that feature as well? Is that correct?
We may be outside the wetlands, we will be obviously looking for determination from the wetlands, from the conservation.
And the dog park might have to go through that.
The dog park definitely will.
All right, I'm sorry, we only are, I'm only going to allow KP, who has been in line. But there will be other opportunities for public comment on this in the future. Thank you.
KP, please lower your hand and speak as you will.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. My name is Karpis Patel. I am resident of 40 Queen Isabella Bay Ashland. And most of them, it's concern about the safety. But most of the people are thinking about the safety for themselves, but no one think about the kid safety. Where there are like, currently I'm dropping my kids on America Boulevard or Queen Isabella Way, Bush Stop. There are like on a snow time, there are more than 20 car is parked and it's full jam, like no one can go around and we have to walk on the snow sometimes. So we have to consider about those things as well. When we think about the traffic and kid safety, first of all, that's the most highest priority things, I would say. And as well as that, Mr. McDonald and company say, they are like, consider, they ask to the resident about the dog park. But as I know, and we take some survey, no one ask about the, they need a, like a kids park or a dog park. So that should also be, should be taken care, like they should have to ask to the resident, like what they need here, kind of thing. That's all from us. That's all from myself.
Okay, thank you so much. Tricia, I think at this point it makes sense, uh we'll move to the chair. Um to continue this to a another date.
Yes, absolutely. Like like I've said, we, this is not the um end point of this project. There's a lot more discussion to be had to see where it is going. Um and a lot of further investigation that that needs to be made, but we thank the applicant for. The presentation this evening and also we thank the public for for. Sticking with us, it's not the most interesting thing to do on a Thursday evening and giving us your feedback, so we do appreciate that as well. So at this time, um I will, where are we looking to continue this to the?
So the next meeting uh that we do have on our calendar is for the thirty first of. The thirty first of March, uh and then we're gonna get back into our regular routine of the second, the fourth, two Thursday of every month. Uh moving forward and then that would also put us on. Excuse me, April fourteenth, uh Mr. McDowell. Regarding taking taking the comments, obviously, um that were stated by the planning board and by the public. Um is there some, is there a date that you would like to highlight or is there something, or or do you plan to move forward and put together? Um obviously, you know, deeper architectures and or um civil drawings uh that could be submitted.
Well, what we'd ideally like to do is come to your March thirty first meeting and your April fourteenth. I've heard some comments I'd like to address relative to some of the architecture. I've heard from numerous uh committee members, we'll discuss that with Matt. And at the same time, we will look at the entrance on Chestnut Street with our civil engineer. To see if there is a possibility shifting that left to right, given the grades and the constraints we have in that regard. And we'll also get the, uh if the board would like, we'd like to also get the traffic study updated to reflect. The current number of units in the commercial space as well. If if those are in line with the thinking of the planning board, we'd like to have those off your next meeting on March thirty first.
Uh Roy, just to just to clarify, uh because you said that you were gonna study that uh the 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 curb cut i- issue. Uh what 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 I meant is that the importance of the alignment with what's public, that is facing the public way, so that is truly public, so. Either the curb cut could move or maybe the courtyard could move, but just I I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
Okay, we'll be happy to look at that.
Just so unclear on the direction of the architecture, are we looking at eliminating that kind of area with the flatter roof and make it more homogeneous? Or or what was the direction on that?
I I would actually ask you to go back, uh instead of us rehashing it now, to go back and watch the tape of this. And and listen to the comments in in that way, because there are a variety of comments there and um. And we still have another public hearing ahead of us. So I think we're looking to continue this to. I I'm looking ahead as to what's on the agenda. We could do the thirty first, but I can't guarantee that we'll also put you on the fourteenth. When when we have, we'll have other public hearings scheduled for that date. We're we're quite swamped right now and um. And then these are larger public hearings, so.
Would you like us to continue further in detail on the site engineering plans as well?
Well, I don't think we, I don't think we know yet. I think there's still some, there's some issues of design, so. That I think is up to you, if if you feel it's money well spent, or if you'd rather have, if you'd rather hold off. So. Um so I would say we we can do the thirty first, but it would not be a long. Session like this, it would be a shorter session to check in and see where things are and to look at a next step.
Let me ask you, do you ever receive drawings from applicants sort of midway through that time period between March thirty first and now? To critique, comment back before the meeting, so we can be a little more productive?
Uh Peter? They're saying public uh.
So, you know, whenever new plans get submitted, um you know, I I I send them out immediately, you know, I send them out to the planning board. Um if the planning board wants to send comments back through me, obviously I can deliver those to you, uh Roy. Uh and then we can kind of take it from there. But obviously, I think it's, it's really within these public hearings that obviously the most of the discussion gets done.
Though I I know the final decisions of things the planning board is thinking about would be in a public hearing, but. For instance, if we came up with some ideas after listening to the tape again. And thought we understood what you said and we we did some drawings. It'd be nice to send them over to you and just say, yeah, you're right, right in line or. Little more this, a little more that, so when we finally go to the public hearing, we haven't wasted a month in that process.
I understand what you're saying, Roy, and and I can tell you this, that um any drawings that you submit, I will circulate right away to the planning board. And if the planning board members feel like they want to review them and submit comment back to me. I am happy to act as a uh, I guess I'm happy to act. Um as a point of communication between the planning board members and yourself regarding the plans.
That would be very helpful.
Thank you. Roy, can we just get a continuous memo uh sent over to me as soon as possible for the thirty first? Um from either you and or one of your sons, I would really appreciate that, uh so I can file that to councilor uh soon as possible.
Thank you.
So I will, I will then make a motion that we are continuing this hearing to our March thirty first. Go ahead, roll call vote. Marcelo, you're muted. And Trisha Kendall, I, okay, so that we are continuing until March thirty first. At this time, we have one more public public hearing um. Uh for the um planning board, do you need a five-minute break or do you want to do this one first and then take a break? Five-minute break, three-minute break?
I'm fine going.
Fine going, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let us continue on then, switching gears. This is, we're opening a public hearing if um. Right, Peter? Therefore, I think I will. I will turn it over to Lakshmi.
The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March seventeen twenty twenty second at seven. At seven fifteen PM via Zoom. Uh to hear the petition of Sue Robertson and the Robertson Nominee Trust requesting a preliminary subdivision plan of rules. As per chapter forty one, section eighty one K through eighty one G G of the Massachusetts General Law. And chapter three forty four subdivision of land of the Ashland Bylaws. The applicant is seeking to create four buildable lots. Two lots shall be accessed by a common driveway known as Highland Road. The additional two lots will be accessed through the extension of Ball, Ballard Road. The property in question is identified as Ballard Road, Marietta Road, Highland Road, and Hundred Fountain Street. Accessors map nine and ten, lots thirty five, one ninety nine through two oh seven, two fifty five. And two fifty seven in the residential A zoning district.
Thanks, Lakshmi. Um Peter, just for our, all of our understanding. The title of this one says a preliminary subdivision. That is versus a definitive subdivision, correct?
Correct.
And and can you explain the difference to us?
A polymer of subdivision and I tried and I uh sent out some materials uh to help kind of paint the picture a little bit, but. A polymer subdivision is a very, is a, is is what it says. Um and it is far less um and is far less strenuous, I would say, than a full-blown definitive subdivision. So it is a voluntary act by the landowner. Um and the main thing that the uh applicant and the application is doing in this uh. Sense is they are um laying out the proposed roadway. And they're representing the lots that would be created by the roadway in general. Um and so what a uh 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 a. Excuse me, polymer subdivision is, is it gives the the landowner the ability, the ability to communicate with the planning board. And to give the planning board an idea of of what the landowner is thinking to do with the subdivision of the property. Now, with that said, I just want to make note that a preliminary plan is not recorded with the registry of deeds. And excuse me, I forgot somebody in. Uh the a polymer plan is not recorded with the registry of deeds, and so there is no manipulation of the property lines. So what follows after a preliminary subdivision is a definitive subdivision. So this is just a, I don't want to call it a draft, but it is preliminary. And we are just looking at the roadway layout and we're just looking at the lots. Um the applicant is, has not produced civil engineering drawings regarding detention basin and or water calculation for drainage. That, all that information comes within the finished subdivision process. And so that is the next step. So I know there's a lot, been a lot of questions about drainage, street trees, is there gonna be lighting, access? All those in, all those questions truly get answered within a definitive subdivision uh stage. And so for the most part, the planning board should really just focus on the roadway, the width of the roadway, number of lots. Do the number of lots meet the zoning and uh it really, that's that's truly what we are looking at.
And Peter, just to clarify, if we approve the preliminary plan. That does not prevent us from disapproving the final plan, right?
That is correct. The polymer plane does not lock the planning board into anything. Yes.
And then was the, is the preliminary plan also presented to the Board of Health?
Uh the polymer plan, yes, is circulated to the Board of Health.
And is our, is it typical for planning boards to make their review kind of conditional or? Connected to the Board of Health reviews, like is it typical to say it's approved? Conditional on the Board of Health approval or like how does that work, that interconnection?
So the interconnection between the planning board and the Board of Health is more of a, from a historical standpoint. Uh well, not historical, but it's from a standpoint of septic versus sewer. So whenever subdivisions are developed, all the subdivision in the homes would be strictly on sewer capacity, excuse me. Septics uh and septic systems, which would be obviously built upon the lot. The Board of Health is the permitting agent for all septic systems, and so therefore, when a plan is submitted. That is going to be fully on septic, um the Board of Health is notified and typically the engineer would provide the. For the health with um. Excuse me, um I'm I'm blanking on the term. Um perk rates, percolation rates on each lot, which therefore govern the size of the septic system, the bedroom count. Um and the quality of the material uh on that lot, well, the quality of the soil that's on that lot. That is the, in relation to the interconnection between the planning board and the Board of Health. And I believe for this system and or this um application, I think the four lots would be on sewer. Um however, please note that this plan was submitted to the Board of Health.
Okay, and then I also look, you know, looking at the the the. Um the regulations, the Ashland regulations for preliminary plan, there's so many steps, if you will, to a proper contents of the plan, like. I think there's twelve things, including a butters list and all of that, has 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 that all been met?
Yep, all those things have been met. And and so this preliminary plan, I can tell you that all butters, if you have a fee for property, were notified by a certified male. The applicant did submit green cards um to the office. Um and so the applicant has met all the criteria within our bylaw. Um I reviewed the plan um and it uh it meets a criteria.
So who who is presenting the project tonight, Peter?
Well, I believe um the applicant is Sue Robertson in the Robinson Realty Trust. I believe George Connors and Joe Mokwadon are the two representing the uh plan. George Connors is represented from his attorney's uh attorney's standpoint. And I believe Joe Mokwadon is engine, is the engineer and um the civil engineer for the plan. Um and so at this point, I think it makes sense to open it up to both Joe and, excuse me, George and Joe to take us through what is being proposed.
Evening all. Joe Mokwadon here. Um Sue Robertson has a prior work commitment and cannot be on the call tonight. As uh Peter mentioned a moment ago, George Connors, attorney George Connors, counsel for uh the trust and for Sue is on the call. As well as Carol Shapley, Sue's sister, in case there's any need to catch up on some of the history. Would it be possible for me to uh share my screen?
I can, I'll make you a host right now, Joe. You're uh free to share your screen.
Can we all see that?
Yes.
Great. What we are talking about is the area at one hundred Fountain Street. And then the surrounding properties. At this location here, Fountain Street being down here on the right, Upland Road. You see the the two existing roads, Ballard Road and Highland Road. We've got approximately six acres involved um in uh the project. Um Sue lives here at uh one hundred and the remainder of these small parcels are owned by uh the trust. The Robertson Nominee Trust. That um. Those lots show up on this plan from nineteen fifty. The orientation is the same, Fountain Street down to the bottom, Upland Road up beside. Ballard Road and Highland Road bisect the property and they're connected by Marietta Road. Um this plan shows approximately thirty four lots, several of those have been deeded out to uh the butters. What um the trust owns are parcels fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Twenty nine through thirty one, twenty eight, twenty one, and a portion of twenty two and twenty three. Um one of the butters, Mr. McGee, owns an oversized parcel in here. So there's a short, small slivers through here. These are approximately twelve to fifteen thousand square feet in size. The family land was uh transferred over to Dorothy Robertson. Shortly after that, was placed into that trust for the um benefit of uh of Dorothy. The sale of uh the parcels goes to pay for um her care. Um a ninety-two-year-old woman, um this, these are paying her bills and paying for um her care. Of of the thirty four parcels, um approximately thirteen are left in the ownership of uh the trust. And what we are proposing is to take those thirteen parcels and um. Redistribute those, so we have the same orientation just as you saw a moment ago, Fountain Street here, Upland Street here. Ballard and and Highland, pardon me, and and Highland. Um I guess maybe we can butt it off in um in chunks. Lots one and two are here at the top of the page and three and four are down here off of Ballard Road. Ballard Road is uh semi-improved. There is a driveway system to access the home of Mr. McGee. It's uh portions are gravel, portions are paved, there's a short turnaround and it ends right about here. What we're proposing is to take Ballard Road and extend it um to the east. And uh provide a uniform width to uh the surface. The existing right-of-way is forty foot wide. The pavement varies in width, what we're talking about is standing night, standardizing that to twenty-six foot wide. And then providing a turnaround for emergency vehicles. Given the scope of this, Ballard Road could be considered a lane by your, by the definition inside your bylaw. Which would require us to be a forty-foot-wide right-of-way and a twenty-six-foot-wide paved surface. So what we're proposing would meet the requirements of a lane. The length of Ballard Road would become about four hundred and fifty. The length of Ballard Road would become about 450 feet, well under your 800-foot maximum. What we would do with one and two is a little different. Ballard Road, the tree line is back in here. Highland Road is almost entirely wooded, so a couple of property owners, the Tessessinis, the McGees, utilize Ballard Road for access with driveway curb cuts. We're going to introduce the two new homes. That in our minds really speaks to an upgrade to Ballard Road that's in line with the requirements for a lane. As we look at the Highland Road section, it speaks more to scope and scale that all we'll have are the two homes on, on the improved condition. So we thought it would be, would be appropriate to ask the board to consider a common driveway that we take a 12-foot wide drive from Upland Road to provide access to these, these two homes be more in line with the traffic use we'll see there. And then meets all the other requirements that, that the board has expressed in the past. Reduce our impervious area, reduce our, our tree cutting, our site grading. It kind of seems to fit better with the idea of, of the common drive. We have existing utilities in Upland Road. We have municipal sewer, municipal water, gas, and power. Those would be extended down Ballard and down Highland to meet the new homes. The site is predominantly wooded in the areas that are retained by the trust. It flows, big picture stuff, I should back up a second, big picture stuff. The, the elevations flow north to south. So the high point is up here at the top of the plan. Elevation 262 and elevation 178 down here at Fountain Street. What we are proposing is to mitigate the changes that are going to be associated with the development of these four single-family residential lots. So to take our stormwater and manage it. The most efficient way to do it is to place the basin down gradient of all the site work. We can then capture all the changes, we can mitigate and infiltrate the stormwater. So that's generally how we're going to approach this. On the downhill side of the improvements, we've got a proposed infiltration basin. We've reserved rights over this section of the corner lot so that drainage pipes could be introduced into that section if necessary. So I anticipate a very basic preliminary review to somehow manage our water by taking it be a closed drainage system, catch basins, manholes, and piping along a lot line or somehow through the, one of these house lots to a detention basin down in here. And then either this basin or a series of basins in this section then convey the water to the drainage in Fountain Street, which will then go on to the Sudbury River. As Peter mentioned a moment ago, we feel from this side of, of the table, this side of the screen, that this is an opportunity for the applicant to hear the concerns of the board, to flesh out anything that maybe needs additional scrutiny and to get some feedback on how this should look as we move forward. So we will, should the board act favorably on this proposal, be fleshing out all the details. Additional analysis, analysis will be given to the impacts from grading, just from stormwater, connections to utilities. All that stuff will be, will be fleshed out should we move forward with, with this to the definitive stage. But right now, I guess we're talking, in my mind, big picture concept stuff. So that's a brief overview of where we're at. I'd be certainly happy to, to answer your questions about particular points of this proposal in depth, if, if you feel necessary.
And can you just confirm it, how large each lot is, the proposed lot size?
Oh sure, the, this is in the IRA Zone District, so they all have a minimum of 150 foot of frontage and they're all right about the 30,000 square foot minimum. Lot one up top is at 30,000, two is 30,100, three is 31,000, and four is 31,000. So they're just above the minimum.
And so basically, the, basically, the, the lots that were created before obviously no longer fit today's zoning. And, and so these are, these are the minimum size lots that are, that can be done in this area, in the zoning area.
Correct.
And how would the Concom process work? Are you planning to do a notice of intent? Or a storm, stormwater permit? Sort of what's your, what's your thought on that?
The only wetlands we have is, is on the other side of Fountain Street, associated with the Sudbury River. So if our stormwater can be contained in this location, then we will have no need to file with the Conservation Commission for anything related to wetlands. But we will have to file for a stormwater management permit. So once, if we move forward to the definitive stage, once we produce documents that will go off to the Planning Board's consultants, we'll have to catch up with the Conservation Commission and close that loop.
And how does that, like, who decides if, if the infiltration, you, you mentioned if that infiltration system works, there's no need for to worry about the wetland Concom piece. How does, how does that get determined? Is that a Concom determination or?
I'm sorry, I cut you off. We will, we will identify the limits of the Sudbury River and the corresponding 102-foot riverfront offsets. And then also the 100-foot buffer zone. And if any activities are proposed down and would have to be down in this location here, then we'll be required to file. I imagine that the 100 and 200-foot limit is going to run right in here somewhere. So if we get down close to or make a connection into Fountain Street, we'll have to seek their approval. If we stay up in this location, we're well off of Fountain Street and will be well off of the river.
Peter, what's the connection between like the preliminary plan review and Concom? Is the planning board, is our review of the preliminary plans, can, can we have Concom involvement now as part of this review? Or is that, how does that work relative to preliminary plan?
Relative to a preliminary plan, we're just talking about roads, layout, what street layout. Typically, we're not involved Concom at this point. The biggest thing to know is the next time, obviously, the definitive plan, when it's submitted with full stormwater calculations and the engineering board, number one, that's going to go off to a third-party consultant. You know, a third-party consultant will review this from a professional engineering standpoint. And that they'll be able to kind of see that. Once a definitive plan is submitted, typically all departments get noticed and to review this applicant, to review the application and the plan. And so once a definitive plan would be submitted, in knowing that there would be a stormwater permit issue, at that point, this plan would be sent over to the Conservation Commission for their review. But the preliminary plan really is just looking at the roads and the, the size and the shape of the lots.
So in, in Peter, the, the, have the shape of the lots gone through, I mean, they don't look extraordinary to me, but they have already, have they gone through third-party review as far as meeting?
Rule 22?
What's that?
The rule 22?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I did, I did all the calculations myself and they all.
Oh, okay.
I saved, I saved a little bit of money. I saved a little bit of money and I did the math myself, so. But yeah, I know, they, they meet the rule 22 and I think that is the reason why, Tricia, that you have. And Joe, if you want to talk about this, there's a, there's a unbilled, there's a lot that's up in the left-hand corner, in the top right-hand corner. That is known as lot, excuse me, parcel A, which is 24,000 square feet. Obviously, that lot right there, if included to lot one, may not meet that rule 22. But all the buildable lots here meet the rule 22.
So is that, so you can't add in, that was one of my questions, like, there's, there's too little leftover parcels, that's a, this is really a question for Mr. Mark. The two little leftover parcels, I guess one isn't so little at 24,000 square feet, the other one seems much smaller there at the end of Ballard Road. And are they not being added in because they make the lots of a shape that can't meet rule 22? Is that right?
Correct. Together, we could add them in, create an extra lot, but the shape is so sorry, a little late, I'm fumbling for the word, the shape is so odd that it would not meet the requirement of the rule of 22. If you say, well, okay, why don't you just split that, add those into lots one and four. We don't reach the two-acre cutoff when the rule of 22 no longer applies. So just to add those to the two lots and say, oh, dispose of that land, they would violate the rule of 22. So we have a sec, a pass, a couple of passes out there that to stay on the proper side of your regulations, I can't add into the lots, but it makes the most sense to do those. We're trying to decide what purpose they could serve moving forward.
That, that was just my question, do they just kind of hang out there in perpetuity? Or do they become, you know, I guess unknown function in the future?
I guess the, the thought process would be get a ruling from the Board of Appeals that would allow us to violate that zoning bylaw and incorporate those into the lots. Set aside those as green space. The issues are still up in the air on, on this side.
Okay, just, just curious.
Joe, I have a question, just from a preliminary point of view, a big picture, like you said. Knowing that mostly everything else, Peter, has confirmed that, that complies with the zoning, then I don't have any questions on that. But from the technical point of view, on Highland Road, just the way it's proposed, if, if I'm reading the contours correctly, we have a little bit over 20 to 24 feet of elevation differential between the beginning and the end of that, of that cul-de-sac. That's almost like, there's more than two stories, so that there's going to be a substantial cotton field procedure here, a massive retaining wall. Is, is, it has, is, is that something that you're going to advance in the next phase? Because it looks fairly unfeasible as drawn right now, but I don't know the details.
I guess, um, we're talking about the section of the common drive?
No, the cul-de-sac, if you make a cross-section through the cul-de-sac, top to bottom, not that one, where you were. Yeah, right there. If you go top to bottom, if you count the contours, it's about a 23, 24 feet difference between the beginning and the end, top to bottom.
This is the, determines the end of the common drive?
No, the, the proposed road that, that is shown there.
This?
Yeah, it, it's.
Geometry, I'm sorry. The geometry, the geometry is set up to create the necessary frontage for the lots through here. We are not going to construct anything in this location. We're going to end our driveway here. So this becomes, I hate the term, but this becomes a paper street in order to generate the frontage. But our construction will be, will end here. So all those concerns about what would happen in that steep area, I think are minimized because we'll quit work back in this location.
So fire department ladder would have to back up if they have to.
Our next step would be to seek out input from the chief on how we turn his truck and get him back out.
Okay, because that, that's what I was getting into. I, I, I couldn't see how a fire truck could actually access that house.
Yeah, whether we utilize the, he'll allow us to utilize the existing drives. We create something in here, in an area that is more manageable than that is where we'll head next.
This is a means of, when it's a driveway for two houses, to try to be efficient, not, not lay down a lot of asphalt for the turnaround of a fire truck for two houses. Is, is that right?
I'm sorry?
It, it's, you know, using the, the paper, the paper road, as you said, or the paper driveway. It's a, this being a common driveway instead of a lane is really a means of not dealing with all that landscape, not laying all that concrete or asphalt. Not tearing apart all the trees just for two houses, but, but still needing to maintain, obviously, that those houses can be reached safely by a fire truck.
Right, that's what I spoke to, the scope of the scale. To, to get in here, it feels like 12 foot is sufficient, 26 seems like overkill. Everything that comes with 26, the, the additional grading, the tree clearing, all the extra impervious area doesn't seem warranted in this location, but we're seeking the viewpoint of the board as we advance that idea.
I would just have one more additional question, and maybe others on the board will have a few more too. Is there any, is there any control in place? I guess, so it's quite wooded right now. Is, is there any way to kind of regulate how much of this land is clear, like clear-cut? You know, that, that's probably not in your scope. But I guess, what would be a step on that? Or is there a way to control that? Especially given the slope, that would make all that water a lot of runoff if, if the, if the area was clear-cut.
Yeah, as, as a traditional subdivision, single-family, it's, it's incumbent on the, the homeowners to be good stewards of the land. I don't see many mechanisms in the bylaw to limit what they do. Obviously, it's up to all of us to decide how much, how much we value the trees, how much lawn we want to maintain down the road, all those things. The impacts will be offset, whatever we show for a limit of clearing will have to be that limit going forward. We'll have to offset all the changes we make from the wooded area to lawn in the stormwater management that we propose for the site. So there will be a check on those folks to stick with that plan. I'm not sure of a mechanism other than folks, you know, honor the, the commitment they make with that, when they purchase that lot.
Right, right, that the homeowner will have up, have, the homeowner will have the rights of, of the property ownership. I was just wondering if, and is, is the intention here to sell the, is to develop the lots or sell the lots? Just to sell the lots and be individually developed by homeowners?
My expectation is that the lots will be sold to a builder. That Carol and Sue and Jean are not in the building business. They have the land, they'll take it as far as they need to, I think, to get some assurances and then the, a builder will take over.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the planning board? Let's see, we have one question. One person has their hand raised, two people have their hand raised. If there's no, if there's no questions from the planning board right now, we can take some public, public questions here. Peter, do you want to take over that?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's all right. The first hand I saw up was Josh. Josh, please unmute yourself.
How you doing? I'm Josh Elgart, 23, Upland Road, Ashland, Mass. I'm one of the Butters. I guess my biggest concern would be what we're talking about, the water, the clearing. You have a drop in elevation of 60-plus feet from lot one to lot two, and that's in under 300 feet. That's a lot of water. We got a lot of trees there absorbing that right now. We're looking at 19 Upland, 15 Upland, and eight Ballard. They're the acceptors of all this water. Right now, I'm at 29, I'm at the top of the hill. I don't have a water problem, but this creates a water problem for me. We have a roadway here instead of Highland, but it's a private driveway. We're looking at a roughly, what, 350-foot road? It's not accessible for a fire truck, 12 feet, 12 feet won't work. Maximum backup capacity for a fire truck is a hundred and fifty feet. The slope going into that driveway is far more than five percent, that's not going to accept any emergency vehicles in there. That street alone is, what I say about three hundred feet, three hundred feet with no drainage pitching down to Upland Road. And all the way down to the next, next catch basin would be in front of fifteen Upland Road, that's six hundred feet plus of water flowing down from the top of that hill. That's a lot of water. What else do I have here? His conservation, have we talked to conservation about this land? At all?
I think we noted that all issues, I mean, we've been talking a little bit water, about water, but we've, but all issues really of water and going in front of other committees is actually part of the next stage of, of this, and this is really about lot lines and, and roads. So that, that stage of the process would not have come into play yet.
Okay, so if we're given special exceptions for private roads, why wouldn't we build a cul-de-sac? Why wouldn't we put the drainage systems in place to accept that water? That takes away from all that, because if you look at the land, the flat spot dies right in between back of my yard, twenty three and nineteen Upland. And no matter how, to try to grade it away from those slopes, you'd actually have to build lot two in a hole. And you know, a lot of variables with this land, this land is, uh, very high, they call it Upland Road for a reason. I guess my biggest concern is this private roadway, they, they can do what they want, we just talked about, you know, if we can't limit the clearing of the land, what's going to stop that water from, from flooding everybody? And if we don't put in a road and we give an exception to put a private street, what's going to stop that, that flow? So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, next up is Mr. Joe Mignani.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. Couple of, couple of concerns that I have, especially with the proposed road. Well, we'll call it a driveway right now, there is a safety issue and concern, and Josh brought up some great points about the, the water runoff. My concern is that right now there were no utilities up in that specific area. So I believe that any utilities that are going to be part of a development, anything new, will have to be placed underground. And has that been discussed, or is that looked at? With respect to putting underground utilities there? And if not, it should be, and the, I know the town doesn't like so on cul-de-sacs, because it, it ends the water, the water lines, but if you're telling me that the last line will be at that last house, which is lot one. Apparently, they, they could probably get away with that, but I thought they had a looped the, the water system. I know that was something that the DPW was always concerned with, so that where there wouldn't be stagnant water in, in the lines. So those were two of my concerns, and I don't know if those have been addressed. The other, the other issue is that, that the runoff. Especially with lot four, I'm concerned about the fact that there are current sheds up there, I'm assuming those sheds will be removed at some point. And there was a well on that site a long, long time ago, and I don't know if it was filled in or whatever. But being, being a kid growing up in that area, I can tell you that there used to be a well there. Where, if it's been abandoned or it's been filled up, that should be looked at, and there is a lot of runoff there. And I'm, I'm concerned with the neighbors, and even the abutters that live off of a ramp, Riverview Drive. And there is a culvert too, which is further right, further east, I should say, off of Highland. So, which runs down into Riverview and behind the homes that abut Riverview on the eastbound side of Riverview Drive. So I'd be concerned about that, and hopefully you folks relook and make sure that you have enough drainage support. Because I can see people's yards getting flooded very quickly with, with the proposal that you currently have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, again, I think a lot of the, the concerns that were mentioned would be taking place within the definitive subdivision process. Next up would be Dee Miller.
Hi, thank you, yeah. I'm at twenty four Riverview Drive, if you look at the map, it's basically the back, my backyard is where a lot full house is going to be built. And I, you, the proposed garage is jogged in, obviously, to, to make the requirements. My concern is, is there going to be a woodland buffer zone between my backyard, which obviously it's all woods now? And, or does lot four yard grass, go right up to my yard, grass. I'm all for, you know, a wooden buffer zone or trees planted. You know, I understand this business that, you know, landowners are in, Sue's a friend of mine, I have, I've known her for years. I'm just concerned about, you know, the twenty, twenty eight years I've been here of privacy and whatnot. And of course, the, the, the water, my house is about sixty seven years old, I've had a dry basement since I've owned it for twenty eight years. I know you, you can say now that there'll be no water problem, but just a little concerned about ten years from now when I have something wrong in my basement, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, next up would be Daniel J. Lee.
Good evening. First of all, I, I'd like to thank the planning board to appreciating our input at this late hour. Couple of comments I just wanted to make relative to site-specific concerns and historical data for Upland Road. One of my concerns would be relative to kind of the dangling Chad off of the Highland Road private driveway, which is identified as a cul-de-sac. But the planner identified it as kind of a dead end, and potentially what could become of that dangling Chad lot? And how that might affect the quote-unquote private driveway and permeable surface, water, drainage and all that. The second comment I would probably make site-specific, and I'm sure Mr. Tessini or Mr. McGee could chime in relative to groundwater is, seems like there's an, an existing spring issue relative to Ballard Low, Ballard Road that drains off? And whether that's been identified or should be considered relative to evaluation of the Ballard Road? And the site-specific build out there? Other comments relative to historical data, if you could entertain me. You know, Upland Road historically was a dead end. Road surface introduced fiscal environment or up or project ten, fifteen years ago, we've, we've experienced drainwaters, surface area runoff in our driveways, in our basements. And there's certainly a concern as we add additional private drives and roadways and non-permeables, non-permeable surfaces, two twenty Upland Road. Last comment would be, again, historically, Outlook Commons was a forty D proposal that had an emergency road associated with twenty three Upland Road, which is Maya Butter. And my question is, is that is, is that part of this consideration with respect to the Highland private driveway and the impact of that? And those are the issues and comments that I have.
Chair, just, can I jump in here for a second?
Yeah, please.
So number one, parcel A is an undersized lot, that would be twenty four thousand square feet. That's a non-buildable lot, and so therefore no building permit could be issued on that lot because it doesn't meet zoning. And, and that would only, and, and so that, we can take the planning board and obviously mark that on the different subdivision. The only way that would become a, a, a buildable law would be to receive a variance from the zoning board of appeals, which I, I would, um, I don't think, I, I'm not at this point ready to have that conversation of how variances and special permits work with the ZBA. I will say that this, this, what is being proposed is only for the four lots that are represented on this plan. It has nothing to do with what was previously approved with Outlook Commons, which was in the past. But tonight, we're only talking about the four roads and, and, excuse me, the four lots and the two roads. Next person with their hand raised would be Mr. Peter Tessini, Mr. Peter Tessini, please unmute yourself. And, and, and please describe where you live in association with this plan.
Hi, good evening, Peter Tessini, I'm at nine Upland Road, so I would be at the mouth of Ballard Road where the cul-de-sac would continue on, I think it was four hundred and seventy five feet. I think you've heard this evening, this is certainly not a perceived issue, this is a real issue with regard to the water. We have experienced over the years, the impacts were terrible when the construction of fiscal estates had been conducted with regard to the trees being removed in the construction. We suffered terrible water issues. And you've heard from residents on Riverview as well as Upland Road echo that. So this is a real issue that we are concerned with during the clear cuts of water runoff issues. So it's another issue that we're going to really try to pay attention to, if you will, we would like to see this addressed or researched. We don't want to have to go through it again. It's something that we've had to live through, I'd like something to be done or looked at with regard to the water that travels down Ballard Road from gravity, wherever it initiates from, it has to come from somewhere. The proposed infiltration basin sounds like it'll work, but is there a contingency if it doesn't work? And I, my other concern is I'm looking at the plan, the permanent access construction and maintenance easement. Permanent, is this for the life of the construction? Is this going to be something that is going to be used, are construction vehicles going to use this coming off of Fountain Street? To bring materials and trucks in as they build these houses? If this is approved by the planning board and Ashland, is this then going to be a gated road that stays open or is used for other types of vehicles? That's another thing I'd like to look at, and a bunch of other things, I certainly understand that this is preliminary, but every question that's answered for me brings up another three questions. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tessini, George or Joe, would you like to take the question about the access easement?
Sure, when the trust was talking about raising funds, this lot here on the corner was sold to a developer. And what we said, it would be prudent to reserve some portion of that that still allowed this homeowner to use their property, but give us some options. Most important point being access to existing drainage in Fountain Street. So we reserve this long before the, the idea of four homes was, was broached. It's, it was our last opportunity to reserve some of this land to give us some options with regard to the disposition of that stormwater, what shape that will take in there, we don't know yet. Ideally, we wouldn't need to utilize it, but it gives us the options. An access road, I, I can't imagine that that is a, would be a full-time option for us. I can see some way to access whatever is proposed in there. So if there were a problem with a clogged pipe, if there were a problem with a detention basin, if they needed to do regular maintenance, maintenance, excuse me, I could see this being utilized for occasional access. As a throughway, I don't see that, I don't foresee that happening. But we'll have a better idea of what shape that's going to take, what, if, and, and when we move to the definitive stage.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Marty McGee, you have your hand raised, and I am going to ask you to unmute yourself and introduce your relationship to this plan.
Great, thank you, thank you so much, that's Marty McGee, eight Ballard Road, and as you can see here on the picture, we're right smack in the middle of the, the proposed development, as you can imagine, of a certain significant interest in us, given that there'd be a house and lots sold on three sides of my house, so thanks for the opportunity. And echoing Dan Lee's point, thanks for, you know, having this process, I think it's a great idea to give the Robertson Party a heads, I call this a heads up in terms of what the, the committee thinks. Might, I just wanted to mention a couple of the things, as most of it's already been mentioned, but a couple of things that have it. One is with runoff, and I know that's a big thing, and there's a way that, you know, if there might be ways for it to be mitigated, that would be great. But there already is an issue with runoff. It comes out from the bottom of my driveway, goes down Ballard Road, and in the winter, a good portion of the winter, Ballard Road is an ice rink. So that just gives you an idea in terms of the severity of it and the need for mitigation if this, there was square to go forward. So, and I know Mr. Mark was mentioning some things about that, but obviously, looking forward, the devil's in the details and love to see that when, when that's ready. The other thing, actually, as a question with regarding, just, I'm a little bit confused with one thing. The road, you said that the width of Ballard Road, there was forty feet mentioned, and there was twenty six feet mentioned. Can someone explain what, what the, is it, what's, what's the forty feet and what's the twenty six feet? Because there are trees on either side, there's telephone poles, there's things like that, and I just, that's just a question that's unclear to me.
So I can answer, I can answer that one before I go forward. So the legal right-of-way, the legal, the width of a roadway is typically always forty feet from side to side, from property line to property line. The paved surface would be twenty six feet. And so, so from the center line, so typically, if you can, the center line of the road, the right-of-way extends twenty feet. The asphalt would extend thirteen feet from the center line, and then there's seven feet of difference. Then that seven feet, some roads have sidewalks, some roads do not have sidewalks. But the old saying that you do not own up until the curb is, is for this instance. But the right-of-way, the legal lot indoor, the legal permeable lot, in most all circumstances with, not just within Ashland, but within all communities. Typically, the town, the, the last, I would say, anywhere between seven to three feet typically belonged to the town and is within the real right-of-way.
Great, thanks, Peter, that's, that's very, very helpful. Hey, just one, one thing I just wanted to also mention, just, you talked about utilities, we're already in place. I don't know if you said on Upland or Ballard, but just on Ballard, just so you know, we do not have, sewer is not down Ballard Road, we have, we have septic.
Okay, I did not know that, I apologize.
Yeah, just, just as a thank you.
Joe, and these houses, would they be on septic indoor sewer?
We're proposing municipal sewer connections for the four new lots.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
There, there is sewer, I assume, down Upland?
Yes, the utilities are all in Upland.
Okay. Um, all right, are there any other questions from the planning board at this time?
I, I do want to kind of clarify a few things. Uh, Peter, I noticed that the application was filed February twenty-fourth. Do we have to make a decision within forty-five days of that, or was there a prior continuance that gives us more time?
No, typically, so we do have to, typically without a continuance, we do have to make a decision within forty-five days. Um, right now, we are on day twenty-one. If we wait until the twenty, excuse me, the thirty-first, that'd be fourteen more days until tonight. That leaves us
Fourteen more days, what?
If we hold off on a decision until, without receiving a continuance from the applicant, the thirty-first is actually, excuse me, the March thirty-first is the thirty-fifth day in relationship to the point of the um, from the date of the application file. Um, so, so we can hear this again on the thirty-first without having a penalty and without receiving a continuance from the applicant.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Joe.
No, this is um, I'm another resident on the street, so I guess my name doesn't show up.
Oh, excuse me, your iPad with a remote.
Right, right, right. Um, so I don't know if you, I can wait a minute, that's all right, but I wanted
No, I mean, I think, I think we thought public comment was done, so if you need to make public comment, please do, right, Tricia?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, go ahead.
All right. Uh, I'm Rick Patazzi, I'm twenty Riverview, so I'm at the very end of Ballard, if they extend that road out. So I, I have a couple of concerns, I guess. Um, overall square footage of houses that they're gonna build, uh, the retention pond that they're talking about. If it has to be done, who maintains it after the fact? Uh, bet, as far as putting a cul-de-sac down there and basically creating a road out of it, that takes all the traffic in and out of that shining lights directly at my house every time somebody comes in and out. Um, I guess the other thing um was we run into a problem in the neighborhoods, I think everybody's running into it. People adding all these LED lights, which seem to be on all hours of the day. Like it's daylight in some of our neighborhoods without being daylight. Um, and the only other thing I had was, uh, there's been pools added to houses over the years, some more recent than others, and um I guess traffic and pool parties have been a new necessary evil. So pretty much that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Um, so, sorry, Anna, did you, did you have other questions you were in the middle of?
Yeah, I mean, I'm more of a kind of a comment. I, I think, I think where I'm at is, you know, I look, I, I I like the idea of a preliminary plan. I think that there's a beauty to that because we can give the applicant real input that can make this a success, right? So I feel like there's, it's an important process, we shouldn't just kind of ignore that opportunity, and I think the applicant would appreciate it because the more information we can give the applicant to sort of input and information, and if we can approve a preliminary plan that makes sense, it's more likely to be a success when it's more official. So, you know, looking at the bylaw with preliminary planning, the board, the planning board is supposed to send it to various other committees, including CONCOM, and it specifically says for their comments and suggestions. And, you know, my, my feeling is, I, I think I heard water mentioned probably twenty times between five or six public comments. I would feel most comfortable addressing it after we ask CONCOM to actually give us commentary so that we can approve this preliminary plan with some deeper understanding of what we're, what we're facing, and we can give.
Nope, I don't know if you can hear us, Anna, but you froze. Okay.
And direction, maybe even change in time to do that by the thirty-first and ask CONCOM to actually offer commentary as the bylaw appears to allow. The bylaw says for their comment and suggestions.
Peter, what's the difference between getting commentary, between that kind of commentary now? Obviously, it can't be full commentary because otherwise there would be no, no need for a definitive site plan, right? So what um, what, what is that process typically? Is it basically looking at the same drawing and offering this um suggestions from their more uh, more professional point of view on on these matters?
Yeah, I know, that a hundred percent, Tricia, and I think I'm happy to sit out, you know, obviously, uh, departments were emailed the link to the plan, just as everyone, obviously, the same link that was sent to the planning board. Um, we have not received comment, however, I can uh, I can obviously try to get some comments and commentary for the board from the Conservation Commission um as soon as possible and leading up and hopefully to the next hearing. Um, and or at least I can get something from the CONCOM agent, uh, who actually was looking at this plan. I think from an overall standpoint, though, the number one thing is um obviously, water is an issue, you know, I, I visited the site, I, I drove out here. Um, and and I highly suggest that everybody do so because the slopes are tremendous. Uh, running from from north to south and on the site. Um, and so what it comes down to is uh, the next step within the different subdivision would have to include a civil plan and the stormwater engineering um analysis, and and obviously the CONCOM, I believe, and I would never want to speak for the board, um, would need to take into consideration that stormwater plant, that stormwater management report and what the plans are, and to make sure that the drainage calculations and the material. Um, and I say material in the sense of soil can absorb the percolation of the water that's coming off the site. And so I, I, I can, I, I, I'm sure that CONCOM would be very much so interested within that stormwater report, the stormwater calculations, and our third part of the uh engineering report to make sure that everything kind of checks out. Um, but to do so, I, I will send this plan and I will check in with the conservation agent um to see if um I can have um uh, if I can have the conservation, you know, uh, review this.
Because a continuance is not appropriate in this situation, this kind, is not appropriate in this kind of public hearing?
Uh, I, I don't, I would say it's not appropriate, but I think at this point, uh, typically, uh, a preliminary subdivision really analyzes does the rope, the, as laid out, do the roadways meet the qualification? And in my, in my review, they do, right? It's a forty-foot wide roadway, obviously. Um, and then the radiuses work um regarding the turnaround. And then uh the four buildable lots are meet zoning. Um, obviously, they have frontage. Um, they agree on thirty thousand square feet and they meet the rule twenty-two. Um, and this is the layout, this is the preliminary plan. Um, the definitive plan is going to get much deeper into the engineering and the development of that roadway.
Well, I would recommend then that we um, you know, continue until the thirty-first. We understand that this is just preliminary, but in that time, we um uh, the applicant can get as much, there, there were a lot of questions asked, obviously, a lot of them had to do with water, and that will be addressed more fully later, but CONCOM could be contacted to get some preliminary information on that, preliminary viewpoint. Um, to get as much, and there were other questions as well, but to get as much information as we can to be reviewed on the thirty-first, and then we can look at it having that information, but also keeping in mind that is, it is a, it is a preliminary subdivision and not a final subdivision. So would that be appropriate to continue until the thirty-first?
It can make the motion, Tricia, if you like.
Please.
Um, so I'll, I'll make a motion to continue the one hundred Fountain Street preliminary subdivision plan public hearing to the thirty-first of March to give uh CONCOM a to request that CONCOM give us commentary and input.
I'll second that.
All right, Anna, roll call vote.
Lakshmi Krishna, I.
Anna Testmaniski, I.
Marcelo Hona, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So we can continue this thirty-first, get a little bit more information, and we will look at it again then.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much. Right.
All right, folks, it's another late evening, though not a record breaker yet. Um, I think remaining on our list, people, anyone can jump in, I think they um the important thing here is the multifamily zoning requirement, MBTA letter. Cause that needs to be in by the thirty-first, submitted by the thirty-first, if we're going to have a letter. And then um we should take care of those meeting minutes. I, I think they're in pretty good shape, but do you guys want to do the meeting minutes first and then we sure, put them out of the way?
Yeah.
So these were for January twenty-seventh and February tenth.
So I, I had no changes. Um, the only question I had is one of the one of the meetings had this kind of red uh, red notes on top that said the audio was not working or something, or video not working. Um, and I don't know if that still needs to remain there, in there, um, and then the very first um item, it seems like I, I may not have been there, but I thought I was. So it just kind of said that we voted for something, and I think I may have been missed, it's okay, I don't. If I wasn't there, I wasn't there, but I thought I, I was there, so that was my only change.
Um, just when I reviewed the minutes, I think the VACA did not jump on or jumped on late, and so they started filming a little bit later than they typically do, so I don't think they caught the first few minutes, however. I think I was able to fill it in with my notes, uh, and or I can go back and look at the vote from that point.
But I don't remember, I don't remember a time when Anna wasn't there, obviously, that wasn't five oh one, so.
Yeah.
Um.
I think it was the January twenty-seventh. Um. January twenty-seventh, three fifty-five West Union Street site plan continuation, it doesn't matter, I, I, I'm pretty confident I was there. It's okay, it doesn't matter if I voted for it or not. I don't think it's the end of the world, I think the notes can be wrapped up. Uh, it would, it just looked a little weird. And I don't know if you want that red still there, that's all, because it kind of reads, I hope you have notes to help fill in the details. Was that meant to stay in the draft?
No, you know what, I just didn't pull it out, so I can pull out the red draft, the red writing.
I think without the red, it's fine.
Yeah, perfect.
Any else had any changes on that? I had already reviewed it, so I know that I didn't have any other changes besides the red, too, I didn't know what, what to do with that.
Yeah, my question is also, I was surprised that Anna wasn't there for the first one, too, so.
I mean, I don't think I would have missed something like that, so throw me in, Peter, say that I voted yes.
I'll put you in there.
I would vote yes for continuance, I, I'm pretty sure.
Yay. I'll put you in.
Yes, I just to be formal and
Yeah, no, I'll take it, that's easy.
Um, okay, so any other questions?
Nope, I think those two are good. Do you want me to make a motion to approve both, or do we need to do it separately?
Oh, well, I didn't, I don't think I asked about February tenth, if anyone had any changes for February tenth.
No, I think it was all good.
It looked good.
Good, everybody. Okay.
And how does it work as far as um, these, these minutes have both Pond Street and not Pond Street? Should we all vote for them with Kevin as well? For the ones that involve Pond Street, like, how does it work?
Uh, I think we should all vote on it.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Do you want to make a motion for both at the same time, Tricia?
Did they, they both had Pond Street in them? Was it, are they both the same that way?
Let me check. January does and February does, yeah, they both do.
Okay, let's put them together.
Okay, I will make a motion to um, accept or approve the minutes for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, and February tenth, twenty twenty-two, with the only amendment being to the January twenty-seventh minutes to remove the red notation on top and add add Anna as a yay to the first continuation.
Do we have a second?
I could second that.
If you don't choke first. That will take a roll call vote.
Lakshmi Krishna, I.
Anna Testmaniski, I.
Marcelo Hona, I.
I know.
And Tricia Kendall, I, that is six zero zero, my lucky number. Um, okay, so we can double back, there's other, obviously, other important things on this list. And is there anything that anyone feels needs to be discussed tonight besides the multifamily zoning requirement?
I mean, we have the letter drafted to go to the select board regarding the comprehensive plan. It, we could save it for the next meeting, I don't, I don't think it would hurt to at least understand what commentary we might have to edit it, so that if we need to edit it, Peter and Emma have some input.
I actually edited it significantly um and sent it back. I, I don't think so much in terms of comment, but maybe in terms of tone, and I sent it back to Peter, so I don't know if that's something Peter, is it appropriate that that gets just sent out to the group so that they can see how I edit it and
I think that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna send it out uh to the group, I haven't had the chance to do so. Um, but uh, in there, we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, and they'll have two versions, and we can cut and paste, we can discuss them, you know, whatever. So it, it might just be worth reading my version and then seeing where everybody falls, I guess.
That makes sense.
And I haven't had the chance to do so, so I apologize. Uh, but I, 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 I will do that as soon as possible.
No, I got it to you kind of late, so um so not, not, not your fault. Um, we can send out doodle poll for a future retreat. Well, I guess one thing, Peter, you wanted to say is, or you wanted to get on there, is a walkthrough for
Yeah, there, there's one thing I want to bring up is that the three eleven Pleasant Street, the sewer project down at the VFW. Um, they did submit revised plans, those were sent out to everybody. Um, and we talked about it at our last meeting, setting up a site visit, uh, there was a doodle poll sent out, Anna and Tricia responded. Um, I just, you know, I, I know this one's been kind of on our agenda for a while, and so I just kind of wanted to get a consensus, do, does the planning board want to schedule a site visit? And I kind of want to put it on the calendar, you know, sooner rather or later, uh, to, to check that box off to make sure that uh we have seen the site, and I can also invite the engineer, uh, who I talked to today. Um, so I was kind of want to test, you know, take everyone's temperature on um their interest in indoor ability to schedule a site visit.
Yeah, I, I did understand where, where the little uh poll came from, but now I do. Um, I, I personally have been there personally four times, looking at it carefully, I, I really don't need to see it again, I don't know how the others feel, but um, that one is one that I, that I, when they're back and forth on different days.
I mean, we can do it individually, I'm happy to go there myself. Um, so if there's a logistical challenge of making it happen as a board, you know, we can take individual responsibility and see it ourselves.
I, I had mentioned during the public, during the public hearing that we would do a walkthrough, it was in the notes or in the meeting minute, so I believe. Um, so I kind of wanted, if, if Anna, even if it's just me and you and we're
Sure.
flexible schedules, we can do with Peter, if anyone else can join, that's great, I, I know you know, Kevin's in Boston all day, it might be hard. Um, so maybe we can make a time, and if someone can join, but at least the engineer can be there and we can discuss um, discuss
Be helpful.
Yeah, we can get that information, at least we got on all the information before we went forward with the decision is, is kind of
I mean, that's, that's ideal, if we can pull that off and there's support to make that happen, let's do it.
I think that's, that's fine, yeah, if you guys set up the date, if I can make it, I'll, 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 I'll go, but um I think that's, that's fine. If you guys set up the date, if I can make it, I'll, 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 I'll go, but it depends.
Tricia, do you plan to have it during a workday? And before the end of March?
You're saying, yes, have it during the workday before the?
Yeah, if you have it, yes, yes, please have it during the workday and before the last week of March, then I can join.
Yeah, I, I think we would be looking like next week.
Oh, okay, yeah, then that's fine. And Peter, I don't think I got your doodle poll. The only doodle poll I got was for the affordable housing thing. I don't see a doodle poll, so but that's fine. I can, I'll join with Tricia.
I was thinking next Wednesday, the twenty-third at four, five o'clock. I know it's staying light out later, so we can kind of meet, which will kind of open up the envelope for everybody.
I can do it.
I can, I can do like four thirty or so. But if it's four, I'll, I'll make it work.
I, I can definitely not do it. I have another meeting at that time, but it's, it's fine.
Kevin?
If it's four thirty, I could probably get there. I might be a few minutes late.
Okay. Why don't we say four thirty? And obviously, if we're a little bit late, five o'clock, but I'll post the meeting for four thirty at the next Wednesday
Okay. And then whoever can make it can make it. If you can't, don't worry about it. Do our best.
Okay, and then the other item before, I just want to give everyone the heads up that the select board last night had a hybrid meeting. Four select board members were actually in town hall at the meeting. One select board was using Zoom. I give, Amber and I give a presentation concerning MBTA zoning. And so it looks, seems like boards and committees are now making their way back into town hall to have regular scheduled meetings. And so I just want to kind of discuss that with the board. Obviously, COVID has declined the last few weeks to a point where it is now socially acceptable to have public hearings again. And so I don't know if the board want to discuss this now and with the next meeting, probably at the next meeting. But I just kind of want them to put it on everyone's radar, that it seems like sooner rather than later, we will go, we can start having traditional planning.
It will. I don't want to put anyone on the spot, so is it best just to send you info, you know, how we feel about it via email and?
We can do that. I just want to throw it out. I'm just trying to throw it out there to say, you know, however we want to go forward, we're, we're, we're open to discussing that.
Okay.
And the hybrid option remains. In other words, we can, we can do a combination, right? Some of us in person, some of us hybrid.
So yes, to my knowledge, yes. The only situation is there's only one room in town hall, the select one room, where hybrid is acceptable because that's where we have the technology, the structure. And so we just got to make sure of that. And, and I don't believe there's other meetings on Thursday nights, the second of fourth Thursday nights, however, we can take over our time slot again. And then the hybrid would be an option for any member that did not want to participate in person.
Can I ask if the select board, is the select board doing some kind of like requirement that if it's hybrid, you have to be in person certain number of times as a member, or it's just like, if you can be there, you can be there kind of thing? Okay.
There's been no regulations at the state level, right? However, I haven't had a word on, from the state level about removing the ability that within public hearings. But no, we can, we can continue on with hybrid. It was very, it worked fairly well with the select board last night. Obviously, there's kinks. There's learning, there's a learning curve to me, so. But just wanted to throw, put it out there, let everyone kind of think about it. So then the only other pressing point is the MBTA letter, which
Yeah, so I think the process here is to just look at the individual points. See, come to a consensus, try to quickly come to a consensus, taking a vote if need be. And and, and approving, approving the letter. I mean, obviously, we're, we're not obligated to send anything. We could send nothing at all.
I mean, my, my only reservation is that third paragraph. I, I, from what I recall from the presentation, we don't need to go outside of the half mile radius. And we can make changes within the half mile to meet the requirements. I, I'm very hesitant to add a pressure point or an incentive for dense housing for downtown without a comprehensive plan or a much more vigorous discussion involving the public. So for me, that the third paragraph is a, is a no-go.
I'm trying to control this Word document on my own screen. I think for me, as we kind of talked about before, that housing in downtown areas that are so easily accessible to the train station and so easily walkable is, is very appropriate place to have housing. I understand your concern about that drawing density there, where maybe we, maybe we haven't decided that we, that we wanted it. So I'm okay taking it out. I don't, I don't agree. I'm not, but I'm, but I'm okay taking it out at this point. You know, it doesn't, I don't think there's, I think we are so close to meeting these qualifications. Peter is telling me today that, that there's so many communities who will have, seem to be having a really hard time meeting this. That these, that really, that the restrictions might be loosened quite a bit, or there'd be many communities that are, just can't do it, where we're very close already. So, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think you're both are right, but I, I, I think we did speak about the appropriateness of downtown to, to have that connection with that, with the train. But it really, it, it doesn't make, I don't think it detracts from the effort. And I, I don't think it blocks us from revising the details as these things gets, gets refined. I think it's good that we show what the problem with the Nyanza issue. It's, it's good to put it there so that it can kind of loosen up, give us a little more flexibility.
And I want to be clear about my comment about that third paragraph. Housing, housing downtown may in fact be perfectly appropriate. I'm commenting on linking state funding to a downtown development. I think what happens is because towns are so financially incentivized for infrastructure funds, that leaving that third paragraph in, in the first half sentence of the fourth is going to make us vulnerable to certain pressure financially to developing housing in a certain way, when we, we may want to develop housing downtown, but I want to remove that financial pressure so that our decision-making as a community is not based on, we just need the money, let's, let's do this. I want our decisions to be based more in a public process.
No, I get it. I, I don't think this was committing us to anything, but, but I, 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 I see your point.
Yeah, I thought this letter was intent on being informative and provide our comments and show how unique Ashland is, right? So if that was the intent, I don't think this paragraph hurts us, but if this letter was intent to do something else, then yeah, we might need to remove the paragraph.
Okay. I'm happy to remove the paragraph. Is, is that the determination of the board?
Peter, I saw CPTC having a session about this MBT communities and kind of really talking about this. Has anybody even seen that? Or is anybody signed up for it?
I signed up. I could not attend. I know someone who did and got a little bit of notes.
Next week? I thought it was next week.
The one I went to was the one that Peter had shared from like a month ago, or the one that I signed up for and didn't go to.
It was a CTPS training collaborator. I forget the data that. I can go back and look at that.
It looks like it's Monday twenty-first, so you have to sign up by nineteenth. Now, I was curious if you want to kind of, one of us should at least hear that to see if there are some thoughts that people would be sharing and would may help us refine this letter with, before deleting anything. We do have time till thirty-first, right?
We, we do have time. It, you know, it wouldn't hurt, you know.
But we're not meeting again.
Correct, we're not meeting again, so it's not, it's kind of, it would be virtual. We have to do, be done by email.
Would it add value, or do you think it's not going to help? I know that this letter was focused primarily for what we are in national versus trying to understand what other communities are doing, but do you think?
I think it's always gonna, I think number one, I'm, I can't say it's not going to add value. I think when you listen to other people's, the opinions, you, you may add, you're going to add value, right? I was on a call today with Metro West planners. I had the, the planning director from Natick represented himself, Borough, Wells, Weston, myself and the planner from Weyland. And they all had the same concerns in that period. Density, around train stations, but in, in communities that cannot absorb the housing units due to the lack of infrastructure that exists in those communities. And, and so I think those are the big elements that you hear. We don't have the infrastructure to build X number of units. Even though this is a zoning exercise, develop, some development is going to come on. And so, however, I think after I've listened to a lot of people, and especially a lot of planners, talked about this, Ashland's in a different boat, because we are so close to meeting these with a couple simple changes into our existing zoning. So I think we're ahead of a lot of communities. A lot of other communities do not have zoning that we have, such as the transit district, in such proximity to our train station. And so I think if you go to that training, you're going to hear a lot of those issues. Lack of infrastructure to support X number of units. And, and I think a lot of communities have believed this is being forced upon them by the state, which they are, however. You know, it, it's, and, and they're not incentivizing the program, and they're not giving enough community credit for the amount of work that they put into having a housing protection plan, you know. Where are they in the SHI, shared housing inventory, and then those elements come into play. That's what I've heard from a lot of the communities.
Just to, just, I, I really, I think we need to wrap this up this evening. I don't think we can, we have a walkthrough next week. I don't think we should try to get something else in there before the thirty-first and get this through. So, I mean, I'm, like I said, that, that I think several of us agree that, maybe all of us agree that downtown is a great place for housing. But, but we're not close to the limits that we, that, that we need. It sounds like it's a pretty low hanging fruit, even without the downtown area. So that I think we can, we can take the paragraph out without, without penalty. And then, and then the, the Board of Selectmen have already edited in. I, I believe, I think that's already, that's in their letter, so.
I was, I was going to say, you know, the Board of Selectmen has its own ability to comment and maybe different from ours. I think that as a planning board, we may be more focused on kind of planning. And at least my commentary on this reflects a concern that the financial pressure is, is, is not needed right now, before we do some more planning for that area. I would just remove that first half sentence.
Oh, yeah, because it doesn't make sense. Yeah, I'm not concerned about the financial pressure. I don't, I don't feel that, but if, I don't feel pressured. But, but if it's easier to have it out there, and you know, to just not, not to worry about it, then, then that's fine as well. Is, does anyone else have strong feelings about that?
When we make the downtown town anyways, I think only fifty percent of the area needs to be within that half mile range, right?
Yeah, I think there was some, some, some number like that, so.
That's correct. Only twenty-five acres have to be within that half mile.
Yeah, so then we should have it easily made. Is that right, Peter?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so is everyone good with this, more or less?
I think it's great. I think it captures that our commitment to it and and does so consistent with Ashland's unique nature, so.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to accept the letter as here, as, as it has been corrected and to authorize Peter to send it to the proper authority.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote.
Lakshmi Krishna, I.
Anna Testman, I.
Kevin, you want in? That passes six zero zero and I really hope that's a wrap.
That's a wrap.
All right, we are signing off at eleven thirty-two PM.
You can motion to adjourn, or we can just wave.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, raise your hands if you want to adjourn.
All right, we're good.
That looks like a majority. All right, everyone. Have a good night.